Welcome to Hadley Town Meeting. It's today's day, April 2nd, 2019. And we are here in the Hopkins Academy Cafeteria. Bringing you live Town Meeting. If you're watching, you should be here.
Yeah.
Let's see if anybody wants to talk to us. Hi, have you ever been on Hadley Media?
We're happy you're gonna be on the TV.
Where's Hadley?
Hadley, Massachusetts.
Oh, that's where we are.
Thanks for coming to Town Meeting. Is there anything at Town Meeting that you're particularly interested in?
Try to keep the taxes down.
Any of the Warren articles you want to comment on?
I haven't really looked at them yet, so I can't say anything exactly.
I think I forgot to ask you your name.
Rich Tchmurra.
Rich, well, nice to meet you. What's your favorite place in Hadley?
Steakhouse.
Okay, thanks so much. Enjoy Town Meeting.
Yeah, you too.
Okay, that went well. Hey there, wanna be on Hadley Media? Aw, come on.
No, I'm actually gonna go see someone up there.
That's not so bad. Almost everybody survives. Oh, you're getting this? Hey, you guys, wanna be on Hadley Media?
Yeah.
What has the Mothers Club got for us tonight?
We have some snacks here tonight, and we are very honored because we are being honored tonight with the dedication of the Town Report.
Seventy-five years.
Seventy-five years of serving the schoolchildren and the community of Hadley.
Well, I look forward to the snacks all the time.
All right.
Any particular thing at Town Meeting you're interested in tonight?
Um, so I'm interested about the marijuana stuff, what's going on with that. Really didn't get a chance to read too much of it, because we're getting ready for our seventy-fifth anniversary tea on Sunday, so been a little preoccupied with that.
What time is that and where is it?
That is at the Most Holy Redeemer Church from 1:00 to 3:00. And we have right now over sixty members are gonna be attending, so we're very excited.
Well, great, that's sixty more people that are probably watching. We'll see if it helps. So, how you doing?
Great, Andrew, how are you?
I'm good. Anything at Town Meeting tonight you're particularly interested in?
I'm here as part of the Park and Rec Commission, and we're here to represent the two articles that are on the line today. So, both dealing with Zaturka Park, one is to get an additional monies to help wrap up this phase of the project, and also to convert that land to a true park. Apparently it's never been classified as such, as Article 25. And a shout-out to the Mothers Club for supporting Town Meeting, meeting after meeting. They're just great to come out and provide all the snacks for people that haven't got a chance to eat, and then coming straight for work.
Good. Did I ever ask you what your favorite place in Hadley was?
You haven't asked me that one.
Consider yourself asked.
Okay, my favorite place in Hadley, uh, within the borders. There's a lot of great parks in Hadley. Uh, let's see. Wonderful stores, wonderful shops, but I have to probably say my backyard, that's my favorite place in Hadley.
You'd be surprised how many people say that. Well, have a good Town Meeting. Okay, so far, so good. Shall we keep moving? Okay, so we have ten minutes, you could just start. Hey, you wanna be on Hadley Media? So what's your name?
Mary Fair.
Hi, Mary, and do you have anything in particular you're interested in tonight's Town Meeting?
The CPA awards and the marijuana bylaws.
Care to give an opinion on any of those?
I think it's great the town has a CPA fund to pay for things that we probably wouldn't fall for on our own. I think it's great to preserve the importance of recreation. Marijuana, I don't think we've come up with anything perfect, but I think having something that's very important is what we're doing.
Okay, well, have a good Town Meeting. Uh, what's your favorite place in Hadley? Okay, thanks. Enjoy it. So far, so good. Would you like to be on Hadley Media? I'll try not to dig a person. So, we still have five minutes ago before Town Meeting officially starts. You could easily get here, um, if you're watching at home. If you don't come, you don't get to vote, you can't complain. Be careful of the cable. I will, if you want. I'll interview you if you want me to.
Okay. I don't wanna detract from my popularity.
Do you find that being out-of-town politics has helped your popularity?
I'm not on that.
No? Okay, we're back. We're back live at the Hopkins Academy Cafeteria. Hi there, welcome to Town Meeting. Are there any issues you're particularly interested in? Uh, no, actually, it's television. It's not radio. It's like radio, but with pictures. Okay, let's see if anybody else will talk to us. Oh, let's see what number we're up to. Hey there, wanna be on Hadley Media? Nope. What about if we shoot you into the lights and you'll see the way? Uh, did you know what number we're up to? Oh, 100, oh, so we already have enough for a forum. Which means we'll be starting very soon. Okay, so without even anybody triple-firing, we have 100, so that's good. I always thought we should get a prize to whoever's the 100 person. You know? Let's actually get on. You're already set. Hi, would you like to be on Hadley Media? Would you like to be on Hadley Me?
I suppose I already am.
Right, uh, what's your name?
Uh, Jim Dittkevitz.
Hi, Jim, do you have any issues you're particularly interested in for tonight's Town Meeting?
Yeah, I'm here to hear the discussion of, I think it's Article 26, uh, the cannabis cultivation question. Uh, and I'm here as someone who's born in Hadley, has lived in Hadley, and also somebody who's been a lifelong farmer, and I'm here to voice my concerns that the town should leave a place for farmers in this new market.
Okay, well, thanks for your opinion. Uh, before you go, what's your favorite place in Hadley?
Well, that'd have to be the mountain.
Okay, thanks. Hi there. Thank you, we're on Hadley Media.
Yeah, she had a late day at school.
Is that the same thing for Hadley Media? No? I don't know, most people wanna be on television, don't you think? Is it really television, that's the question? So, if you are watching live here from the Hadley Hopkins Academy Cafeteria, you could still make it here for Town Meeting. We won't be, uh, starting for a few minutes, and we won't be ending anytime soon. So come on down and exercise your right to vote. We've got some exciting Warren articles coming up, and should be some lively discussions. Let's see, what is going on? I'm not sure whether people are avoiding this side of the room, or they just don't wanna talk to me.
Is that what this Warren?
At this rate, I may have time for my celebrities from Hamlet, which I prepared for the town election and didn't get a chance to say. Hi there, we're on Hadley Media.
Who knows? I got my number.
Any issues at Town Meeting you wanna talk about?
Sixty-two. I want a red one.
Anything you wanna talk about? No? This could be your chance to be normalized forever in digital video. Is it me? I took a shower today. I used soap. Looked on somebody. You can tell, when they don't make eye contact, you can tell. She looked at me twice, I'm going in. Hi, we're on Hadley Media. We're on Hadley Media. Have any particular interests in tonight's Town Meeting? Well, you'll see it in its raw form, that's for sure. Um, what's your name?
Cheryl Cottis.
And what's your favorite place in Hadley? Question?
Town Hall.
Town Hall, okay, thanks, well, enjoy it. Okay, I think we're about to start, so let's cut to the front of the room. Okay, so it looks like we're gonna start in about five minutes. It's Randy Isner's first, um, Town Meeting as moderator, so I'm sure he's very excited. Hey there, would you like to be on Hadley Media? Soon we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will get started. But like I said, any place in town, you could be here in ten minutes. You don't wanna miss the budget, that's the most exciting part. So we're in the final few minutes of the Town Meeting countdown. Hey there. Let's see if anybody... Anybody else wants to be on Hadley Media? Hey there, we're on Hadley Media. Do you have any particular interest in tonight's Town Meeting?
Uh, just mainly, I wanna see how the marijuana vote comes out for, uh, town regulations. I'd like to see it to pass, because other than that, it would be the state governing, you know, the total, uh, whatever discussed about the marijuana and growers and just, you know, distribution. I'd rather see it go into town, through the town, so they would be controlling all that. I'd rather see that than the state.
Could be an interesting debate. What's your name?
Uh, Leonard Kokowski.
And Leonard, what's your favorite place in Hadley?
So, it's the north end of Hadley, it's where all the prime farmland is, and it's rich growing soil, and it's a great place to live. It's quiet, it's nice.
Well, enjoy Town Meeting. Okay, we're almost started. How are ya?
Good, Andy, how are you?
We're on, live on Hadley Media.
Hi, Hadley Media, how are ya?
Any particular interests in Town Meeting tonight?
Always Town Meeting interest. I'm so glad to see such and many people here today at it, it's a great interest. I was one number 128 coming in, there's still plenty of people coming in, so, you know, as I usually sit in the front row, I'm not in the front row tonight, so I get a chance to enjoy it from a little different perspective. And I wanna say hi to my babysitter out there today. She was just watching you on TV, and she said, "If you get a chance to say hi when you get there, say hi to me."
Excellent, excellent.
In my most famous place in Hadley is North Hadley Divine Farms, it's been in the family for years and years and years.
As a former moderator, do you have any advice to give to Randy, since it's his first?
I sent Randy an email today, I told him he was gonna be fantastic at it, he's a great guy, he knows a lot of people in town, very level, ebeheaded-handed guy. He's been on different committees with him in town, and I see how just, you know, committed he is to just get in the system and the process to work right, so everybody has a chance to speak. Um, I reached out to him a month ago, and I said I have some information, if you care at all to get it. He stopped by and picked it up, and, uh, hopefully, uh, it helps his time be a little easier tonight. I remember my first night, uh, being a moderator, I was pretty nervous, but a lot of people helped me along too, so. We do a great process, I, I saw the agenda, I don't think it's gonna be, I think there's gonna be a lot of opinions voiced tonight, but I don't see anything particularly controversial, so there's no lows tonight to talk about.
Well, any Town Meeting without a fistfight is a good one, right?
That is, that is. Thanks for the interview.
Enjoy it. Okay, so I can see on the far side of the stage that the moderator is talking to the, uh, to somebody, and it doesn't look like they're gonna start any second. So we still have a few more minutes of stretch. And that'll leave on. Oh, here we go. Right in front of you. All night. We're on Hadley Media. How, how you doing? Uh, how's your time on the planning board so far?
So far, it has been eventful. I've only been to one meeting, but then my second one is, is coming Tuesday, so.
Any issues at Town Meeting you're particularly interested in tonight?
Well, I'm certainly hoping that we pass the marijuana bylaw that they've put so much work into and so much thought into, and I think everyone understands that it's a vote to control, not a vote whether we have it or not, so I'm hoping that'll pass with the two-thirds.
Um, what, what's your favorite place in Hadley?
Favorite place in Hadley? Well, depending on the season, right now, actually all year, it's probably North Hadley Sugar Shack.
Okay, well, enjoy Town Meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Hey there. We're on, we're on Hadley Media. Uh, maybe I can rope in one of these people.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay, we are starting. Enjoy Town Meeting, everyone.
It is 7:06 PM, we have a forum, I will call this meeting to order. Return of the Warren show said it has been properly served. Please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain seated, I mean standing. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those we have lost since our last Town Meeting, including Joyce West, and those victims and their families who have suffered from recent tragic events, world events. Thank you. Now, you may be seated. At this time, I would like to introduce the people at the head tables. To my left, Select Board, John Muskevitz, David Phil, Molly Keegan, Joyce Chumpel, and Chairman Kristen Stanley. Town Administrator David Nixon. Town Council Brian Riley from KT Law. To my right... Town Clerk Jessica Spankable. Finance Committee Amy Feiden, Valerie Hood, and Kathy Zaturka. And I am your moderator, Randy Isner. This evening, I acknowledge the Hadley Mothers Club for providing refreshments for this meeting. Feel free to visit them at the appropriate time at the back of the room. The collection they make this evening is going to the Hopkins Academy Boys and Girls State. I thank the Mothers Club also for their donation of a laptop computer that was used for the public forum held here last week regarding the Town Meeting. Also, I thank Hadley Media for recording this and most all the meetings that occur in town. In our presence this evening, we have our distinguished state representative, Dan Carey. Mr. Carey would like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to get up and say hello and thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening and to be your state representative. In my short time so far since January, I've really enjoyed my visits to Hadley. I'm at the Senior Center, uh, once a month, and I hold town, uh, public office hours throughout town in different places. We've had them at the library, there's some coming up at the end of the month at Town Hall. So please do, uh, come by, say hello, give us a call, let us know how my office can help you guys out, and, um, I'm looking forward to the Memorial Day break. Thank you very much, take care.
At this time, the Select Board would like to dedicate the Town Report. Whoever wants to do it. Do I come up here or go down? It is with great honor that I have the dedication of the Hadley Town Book, and the first one is going to be to the Hadley Mothers Club. So if there's anybody in the audience that has been a member, present or past present, I wish they would please stand up. And we have a president down here, please. You have a lot of presidents. So I'll start with the dedication of the 2018 Annual Report. The town of Hadley is proud to dedicate the 2018 Annual Report to our outstanding citizens who have contributed so much to the town of Hadley. By this dedication, we acknowledge the many, many contributions this organization has made to our town over the past seventy-four years. I have to say seventy-four years because it's a 2018 book, so we're now in 2019, and it is seventy-five years. But, the Hadley Mothers Club was started in 1944. The purpose was for young mothers to socialize, to discuss concerns and common interests, and to render public service. They began by establishing a kindergarten class in 1945, and they continued their support by donating classroom materials in the following year. Today, the Mothers Club mission is to still to serve Hadley by providing opportunities and support for our youth and members of the community. They fulfill the mission every day in a wide, wide variety of ways, through fundraising events and programs that support scholarships to Hadley graduating seniors, by supporting girls and boys state, sports banquet, van trips, senior trips, by providing startup funds for girl and boy scout troops, and much more. They also sponsor Candidates Night to bring together townspeople with candidates running for political offices, a project that helps people make informed voting decisions. Mothers Club meetings provide informative and fun activities for all members, including workshops of internet safety, town planning, information, self-defense, nutrition, equipment, swaps, and gardening. These meeting events are thoughtfully organized to serve the needs of the people of the town of Hadley and enrich their members. To support their events and programs, Mothers Club members have donated countless hours and skills in various fundraising efforts, such as the Hadley Holiday Fair, Recycling Day, Hillside Pizza, the Giving Grill at Whole Foods, and Helping Hearts for Hadley Schools Road Race, where they staff the large stations. For over seventy-four years, the Mothers Club has been a continuous presence, looking out for our children in our community, having embodied volunteerism and community spirit for generous giving and for continued service to the town of Hadley. The Hadley Mothers Club deserves recognition and our thanks. I'm using a proclamation also. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is now Hadley Mother Board of Select and Proclamation 2019, whereas the Hadley Mothers Club was founded in 1944 for young mothers to gather socially and discuss subjects of common interest and render public service in Hadley, Massachusetts. Whereas the Hadley Mothers Club established the first kindergarten class in Hadley in 1945. Whereas the Hadley Mothers Club supports Hadley schools and community through their activities and fundraisers. Whereas the Hadley Mothers Club has supported a Candidates Night to the following residents of Hadley, as opportunities to meet candidates of local elections. Whereas the Hadley Mothers Club has earned in respect and affection of a host of family, friends, students, and residents of the town of Hadley. Now therefore, we thus let word of the town of Hadley, Massachusetts, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this proclamation to Hadley Mothers Club on their seventy-fifth anniversary with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many happier productive years. We have another dedication of the Town Report. John Muskevitz is gonna give that.
Uh, the second dedication of the Town Report is for individual. Town Avenue is proud to dedicate to 2018 Annual Town Report to our outstanding citizens who have contributed so much to the town of Hadley. Mr. Edward Dittkevitz. Ed is from a family of five siblings who grew up in Hadley. He learned at a young age the importance of volunteering for the fire department. As his family and neighbors would respond to emergencies, emergency calls, often running from their family fields to help their neighbors. After graduating from Hopkins Academy in 1971, Edward immediately joined the Hadley Fire Department. Ed attended Springfield Technical Community College and Inter Rico, and that began his career with Western Mass Electric Company. Ed was appointed as Lieutenant in 1976, and was often recalled, recalled as first volunteer EMT in town. During his time as, or, during his time as a firefighter, Ed continued learning all that he could and sharing his knowledge with other firefighters, including myself. He received several letters of thanks from neighboring communities for his assistance during mutual aid calls, in particular from North Hampton and Amherst. Ed served as First Assistant Chief from 1997 until his retirement from the call force in 2013. Ed recently retired from a long career at Western Mass Electric Company as a plant operator, but he has now retired from his longtime hobby of baking. Did you bring any brownies or cookies this evening? As the town of Hadley began planning for a new fire substation, Ed answered Hadley's call once again, serving on the building committee. We thank Ed for answering the call of service for the town of Hadley for over forty years.
The Select Board will now present the Fred Oakley Award for Volunteerism. There are two recipients tonight. David Phil is going to hand out the first one. The Fred Oakley Junior Award was established by the Select Board to honor members of the community who embody the spirit of volunteerism and service to the town of Hadley. The first co-recipient for this year is Leona Shumura. Leona was born and raised in Hadley to Edward Muskevitz and Helen S...
Leona was born and raised in Hadley to Edward Muskevitz and Helen Zepplowski. She is the oldest and only girl of five. Leona was no stranger to hard work, including harvesting tobacco, having grown up working on her parents' farm. She attended Hadley schools and was a member of the Hopkins Academy graduating class in 1960. In 1964, she married her high school sweetheart, Rich Shumara. Leona and Rich were blessed with three children, David, Debbie, and Steve. Active in the Most Holy Redeemer Church, formerly the Holy Rosary Church, Leona volunteered as a CCD teacher for many years. She particularly takes pride in knowing she taught hundreds of children how to properly save the rosary and has sponsored numerous students being confirmed. She is a eucharistic minister delivering communion to homebound parishioners and those that reside in nursing homes. Following a number of years working as a dental hygienist, she eventually retired from the Registry of Deeds. Leona also works in Hopkins Academy cafeteria and also with the after-school program. It is here that she was able to continue her positive influence on another generation of Hadley students. Known to many as the Polish mom, Leona is famous for hosting karaoke dinners and special deliveries of the best fresh strawberry sauce and vanilla ice cream, which has propelled her into a league of her own. Leona has been a champion for the youth of Hadley, cheering at sporting events, school concerts, and graduations. She truly has touched the hearts of hundreds of children. She especially enjoys time with her two grandsons, Marco and Angelo, and beloved Corgi. She is an avid gardener of veggies and flowers and looks forward to her trip to Poland. Never underestimate Leona or the power of Golongki. Leona's many positive words, special notes, cards, uplifting spirit, and smile is the epitome of the character of the Town of Hadley, that the Town of Hadley wishes to represent to its residents and visitors. So I'd like to present this copy of the annual report to Leona.
The second Fred Oakley Junior Award is being given this evening in memoriam to Dennis Meehan. Dennis moved to Hadley with his wife Linda several years ago after retiring in order to be closer to family in this area. Almost immediately, they joined the Friends of the Goodwin Memorial Library and became deeply involved with supporting the library programs, fundraising, and efforts to design and build the new town library. Dennis served with distinction on the Library Planning and Design Committee, and later on the Library Building Committee, bringing his enthusiasm, knowledge, and finances and sharp pencil to the process, until his passing late in 2018. Dennis was born in Northampton. He was a graduate of Middlebury College and Columbia University. Dennis served in Vietnam with the US Army and worked as a CPA and retiring as CFO of Palmer and Dodge in Boston. Along with his passion for gardening, helping make the new Hadley Library a reality, Disney World, genealogy, his greatest pleasure by far was the time he spent with his family and his grandchildren. So we'd like to present this to Dennis's family. I don't know if Linda or anybody from the family is here this evening to receive this.
Select Board Chair Christian Stanley would like to give a State of the Town Report.
Good evening and thank you for coming out tonight. I'm excited for the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. But before we start, moderator Isar is granting me an opportunity to give you a quick update. I just want to provide you with a snapshot of our 2019 accomplishments, a quick budget outline for 2020, and some strategic goals I have for my term as Chair of the Select Board through April of next year. Our first 2019 accomplishments, we implemented the new ambulance service this year, which has been a really great contribution to the town, really fast response times and great service from what I hear. We've hired a new DPW Director, who you'll hear from later tonight most likely, Christopher before. We've made significant progress in all three new facility projects in town. The Senior Center completed all approvals necessary to start construction, and we've selected Forest Construction as the general contractor. Foundations for the building are going in as we speak, and passing of the Article 23 tonight will allow us to start running electricity to the site. The library has also completed all its approvals necessary to start construction. It is out to bid right now, and we're hoping to select a contractor for that project in early June. The fire substation, also well underway and with all its approvals met, is out to bid and will be selecting a general contractor for that in mid-June. The Hooker School is no longer home to the Senior Center. Senior Center is now in its temporary home at the Most Holy Redeemer Church. Hadley Media is on the second floor of the library. Planning Board and Parks and Rec, who are all in the Hooker School, are now located in Town Hall. Hooker School is essentially ready for demolition once the library project moves forward. We have been awarded numerous grants, including the Compact IT Grant, which will allow for electronically organizing town documentation onto the LaserFISH system. This is in collaboration with Northampton and hoping to get a lot of the paper files that are currently in Town Hall into an electronic format. We have implemented a system to make billing in the collector's office more efficient. We're also awarded a public-private partnership grant to repair a water line near the Mountain View Apartments, and hopefully that collaboration will open the door to future opportunities with the Baker Administration. The Town Collector and Treasurer positions have been approved to transition from elected to appointed positions. The Treasurer is now officially appointed as the elected term expired in April of 2019, and Collector will be appointed after April of 2021. We have begun to implement a new community communication system, Nixle, and there are many more accomplishments in all departments. We have many talented and dedicated employees, board members, committee members throughout the town, and I want to thank you all for your service to the town in the past year. For the fiscal year 2020 budget, I just have a quick list of account balances, so if you want to take your pencils out, I'll give those to you now. Stabilization is $1,930,604. Capital stabilization is at $5,775. We've got our reserve funds. Water reserves, $1,112,447. Sewer reserves, $129,117. Hadley Media reserves, $181,582. Sewer impact is at $256,527. And Community Preservation Act is at $2,089,129. In the warrant tonight, Articles 1 through 6, except Article 4, which has been removed or on the consent agenda. For approving the omnibus budget, we have one article for the general budget and one article for the enterprise budgets combined, sewer, water, Hadley Media. The general budget is focusing on Town Hall. Most of the budget is flatly funded, other than contracted wage increases. We have added a human resources position in the budget and have approved tonight. We'll start to advertise that position. We were unable to find funding for a full-time financial management position, but we have allocated the Treasurer more hours to take on a more involved strategic finance role. We have done our best to provide more administration, administrative support to all departments in Town Hall. What we don't have in the budget is a Town Planner. We'll hopefully have more resources to dedicate to this in the future. The Planning Board has expressed a need for this role, especially as some of the members seek to retire from their roles. Full funding for a DPW General Foreman is not there. Hoping to have more funding in the fall Town Meeting to be able to fund that position. And as we move forward, there will be a need to add services in coming years to the Board of Health and DPW, as well as other departments. The tax rate will be set once valuation occurs in the fall. However, it is currently $12.36 per thousand. We have a, we'll have a special Town Meeting in the fall because mainly the state budget is not set. The cherry sheet for the House had less money for charter school reimbursement than anticipated by the Governor's budget, and that entire budget won't be released until the fall. We also have capital projects on that agenda, and in our current capital plan, items will include a new generator for the public safety complex, a girl's locker room renovation here at Hopkins Academy, as well as new unit vents for Hopkins and Academy HVAC, police cruiser, new dump truck, and a Dyke Phase III certification. Moving into 2020, I've selected some strategic priorities for the Select Board, and it has been said numerous times from this Board and those preceding it, that Hadley is in for harder times because of capital needs in the town. Those main needs are updating aging infrastructure, as well as updating aging facilities. I can't deny that these impending needs are there. However, I think Hadley also has numerous opportunities for growth. Just look at the amount of growth that is happening along Route 9, even at a time when brick and mortar businesses are struggling, in Hadley, we are seeing a lot of growth right now. My intention as Chair is to ask the community's participation to envision where we can go from here. For that purpose, I have proposed forming the following committees, and with a caveat, these committees have not been formed yet, so we need to talk about it on the Select Board and approve it. But the first committee is establishing a committee to review our form of government and provide recommendations we can bring to our next Annual Town Meeting in May of 2020. I'd like to establish a committee to address the impact of climate change on the Town of Hadley. This could include establishing metrics to track the town's power consumption, looking at emergency preparedness, disaster protection, as well as recommending climate-specific policies to the Select Board. Establishing a civility and inclusion committee that we as a town can ensure equal rights to all. The committee will work to identify staff and board trainings, as well as identify ways to make the town more diverse and inclusive. I am hoping this effort will include our new HR Director. Establish an economic development committee to look at possible opportunities to change development pathways in Hadley and provide zoning recommendations and Select Board policies to do so. Lastly, I would like to create a plan to update the town bylaws, which could possibly tie in with the senior tax work-off program we currently have. If you would like to join any of these, not yet formed committees, but I'm going to express an interest in joining them, you can sign up in the back. There are some sign-up sheets for any of those committees, as well as the standing committees. Or you can contact myself or Jennifer at the Town Hall. I think we are living an exciting time and can make a positive impact on the community's future. Doing them a past and past decisions is not a path forward. The people that participate in Town Committees and Boards will determine Hadley's path to move forward into the future. So I look forward to your participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Could I have a voter count, please?
Two zero eight.
Two zero eight, thank you. And I was supposed to make an announcement earlier that I forgot, so before I get in trouble on my first day on the job. The Friends of the Hadley Council on Aging are having a really big raffle, and tickets are $25. Jane Nevin Smith is selling them. If you don't catch her tonight, you can get her at the Senior Center. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving right on. Right now, I want to go over the rules of decorum in anticipation that the meeting will run smoothly. First and foremost, this is a democratic meeting. Everyone is entitled to speak and should feel free to do so without fear of retribution. Everyone has an opinion, and that needs to be respected. If you don't understand what is being discussed, please ask for clarification. I want everyone to understand what they're voting on. The meeting will be conducted according to Town Meeting Time Rules. This very intriguing look. If you wish to speak to an article, please come to one of the microphones up front, and I'm told there's one roaming on my left over there. I don't see it, but I would take word for it that it was there. Please state your name and address each time you have been recognized to speak. Keep all comments relative to the article or motion at hand. Do not disrespect any person in any way, shape, or form. Do not refer to any previous speaker by name. Please use previous speaker instead. You may speak as many times as you feel is necessary, but please give others a chance to speak before returning to the microphone. If necessary, I will ask you to wait until others have had a chance to speak. Direct your comments to the moderator. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Please remain seated during voting so that the votes can be counted quickly and accurately. All amendments must be submitted in writing to the moderator as soon as the amendment is offered. And finally, please silence all your electronic devices. I've heard quite a few go off already tonight. Okay, that being said, we're going to get right into the articles. First item on the warrant is the Consent Agenda. This is, tonight it's five articles that the Select Board, Moderator, and Finance Committee have identified for Town Meeting consideration. Those are articles that they believe should generate no controversy and can be properly voted without debate. They have been voted all as one item. So, the motion is move that the Town take Articles 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6 out of order and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the motions shown on the Consent Agenda distributed this evening. And further allow all officers, department heads, and agents of the town to address the Town Meeting on matters as may be informational. Live motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Matusko.
Edwin Matusko, 168 St. Matthew Street. Can we have a brief explanation of what we're voting on? That's all, a few words.
Yeah. David Nixon will give that, please.
Good evening. I'll run through the articles one by one and also circle back to talk about why we're not working on number four tonight. Article 1 is a standard article that allows the town to accept and expend gift and grant money. That way, we don't have to call a Town Meeting every time we get a $500 grant from some agents here or enterprise. Article 2 is required by the state for us to expend so-called Chapter 90 funds. Those are funds used for your roads and your bridges. We receive annually $316,000 for each year to keep the roads in good shape, and this vote is required to fill out the paperwork to get the reimbursement from the state. Article 3 allows the Treasurer to do short-term borrowing in anticipation of future revenues within the fiscal year if we ever have a cash flow shortage. This has not happened, but it's a useful financial tool in times of need. Article 5 is a set aside of money from the water reserves in the amount of $26,000 to pay one year's installment on the water filtration process at the water plant. That filtration process costs $260,000 to replace. It has a use life of ten years, so we put $26,000 aside every year in order to build up to that replacement cost. With this vote, we'll have a balance of $78,000 in the kitty for that project. And the final one is required by state law, having to do with your Community Preservation Act. We have to set aside a certain amount of money for the three categories of use identified in the motion, as well as to establish an administrative fund for the CPA Committee to conduct their work. They're asking for $2,000 for that administrative money that will pay for postage, envelopes, and copying, and legal fees, and so forth. Those are the five articles that are on the Consent Agenda. Why is Article 4 not there? We usually have what we call a cleanup article in every Town Meeting warrant where we have projects that are complete and we have surplus money left over, and we usually try to return that to the pot that it came from. Late in the budgetary process, we thought about this in a different way, and we realized that this money is an opportunity to bring this back in the fall Town Meeting. and we realized that this money is an opportunity to bring this back in the fall town meeting in a way that will save you a little bit of money by paying down the principal debt and saving you on interest rate and interest costs later on. So, take this away tonight, and we'll bring it back in the fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your green card. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. We're off to a wonderful start. Just to clarify, Article Four is being passed over. Okay, we're going to go into Article Seven. And the motion is move that the town transfer from water reserves $1,468 to pay for prior year construction costs associated with the Route Nine water replacement project, and further raise and appropriate $568 to pay a prior year payroll for the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Nixon will speak to this. I need a moment, sorry. A second? Okay.
We have two bills from prior years, so we need to bring this back to town meeting. The first one relates to the water replacement project on Route Nine from Wally Street in the Town Hall. A few years back, we had ETNL Company dig up the entire width of Route Nine. We used that as an opportunity to get in there and replace water lines without having to pay for the overtopped expenses of taking the pavement down. Saved the town many hundreds of thousands of dollars on this project. The project was funded through a grant through the State Revolving Fund. Once ETNL finished the project, they submitted all their paperwork to the state. The state approved it. We closed down the loan. Everything is done. Oops, discovered a bill that hadn't been paid. This is a bill that came from ETNL, and the state confirms that it's due to us. So we're asking for your help in paying for this late bill. The other one is from the zoning board of appeals. They did not turn in their invoice for their service in a prior year, so we should pay them their money.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Shell Harrow, 16 March Delrayne. This is more about future things like this. I think it might be better procedurally to separate out non-like items in case one of them turns out to be controversial and doesn't break down the whole wood. So for this year, let's do it that way. But maybe as we bring things forward in future years, that would be two more on Articles Number One.
One taken. Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, any? Okay. Article Eight, motion is going to be read by eighty-five from the Finance Committee.
So we thought we might do things a little differently this time. Instead of going through each and every line I know here that you're going to see, I'm going to start with the motion. I'll read the totals for it. And then if you have any questions, you can go over there. The motion is to move that $17,454,743 be appropriated as set forth and individual budget appropriations listed under the column FY '20, Finance Recommended, as described in Table A, General Fund Budget, in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget FY '20/20, Annual Town Meeting 2019. As presented at annual town meetings and incorporated by reference herein and as funding therefore. To transfer the local revenue funds raised via taxation and any other available funds to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds, the sum, the total sum of $17,454,743 as estimated in Table A I of the Annual Town Meeting warrant. Each item considered to be separate appropriation. Table A I. FY '20/20 Revenue, raise and appropriate $17,26,667. Enterprise Receipts, $424,704. MSBA Debt Fund Reserve, $2,444. November 2014 Premium Balance, $928. For total revenue of $17,400, I'm sorry, $17,454,743 for total revenue. And then with the total general fund operating budget, $17,454,743. So we have a balance margin.
Flag motion. Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article Nine, Valerie Wood from the Finance Committee will read now.
And my previous year, the under the budget, it presented in two articles, general fund and the combined three enterprise funds to avoid the difficulties of setting the FY '20/19 tax rate due to changes in Massachusetts Department of Revenue, not Madam Gordon, and enterprise funds. Article Nine, Sewer Water Can Have Any Enterprise. Move that the sum of $949,860 as set forth in the column FY '20 Finance Recommended in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget FY '20/20 Annual Meeting 2019 as presented at the annual town meeting and incorporated by reference herein up to and including the line entitled Total Budget Appropriation to be appropriated to the FY '20/20 Waste Water Division Enterprise Fund account. Be expended for the respective purposes set forth, with each item being considered a separate appropriation. Waste water salaries, $332,655. Waste water expenses, $476,650. Waste water debt, $130,555. Waste water reserve, $10,000. Total budget appropriation, $949,860. And further, move that the sum of $1,088,153 as set forth in the column FY '20 Finance Recommended in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget FY '20/20 Annual Town Meeting 2019 as presented at annual town meeting and incorporated by reference herein up to and including line entitled Total Budget Appropriation to be appropriated to the FY '20/20 Water Division Enterprise Fund account to be expended for the respective purposes set forth, with each item being considered a separate appropriation. Water salaries, $379,440. Water expenses, $510,369. Water debt, $188,344. Water reserve, $10,000. For a total budget appropriation of $1,088,153. And further, move that the sum of $68,822 as set forth in the FY '20 Finance Recommended in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget FY '20/20 Annual Town Meeting 2019 as presented at town, annual town meeting and incorporated by reference herein up to and including line entitled Total Budget Appropriation be appropriated to the FY '20/20 Hadley Media Enterprise Fund account to be expended for the respective purposes set forth, with each item being considered a separate appropriation. Hadley Media salaries, $17,767. Hadley Media expenses, $4,230. Hadley Media reserve... Did I screw that up? Okay. Hadley Media expenses, $46,230. Hadley Media reserve, $4,825. Total budget appropriation, $68,822.
Do I have a motion? And a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Andy Morris, Tribune, 45 Roosevelt Street. I see that the reserves have gone from $20,000 in FY '19 to $4,825. Could you tell us why there's such a big drop and what difference that will make?
Who wants to speak to that?
This is, the reduction of the reserve for the Enterprise Fund for Hadley Media was recommended by the Hadley Media Advisory Committee. So they didn't think that the cushion that they previously had of $20,000 was necessary, given the smaller size of their budget.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next up is Article Ten. And there, this is a capital expense article. There are eight motions involved in this article. We're going to deal with each motion one at a time. So, the first one is Motion 10A. Move that the town transfer $40,000 from water reserves for cleaning Callahan Well Number Two for the Department of Public Works, $40,000 from sewer impact fees for a septic truck for the Department of Public Works, and $2,000 from water reserves, $2,000 from sewer reserves, and $2,000 from raise and appropriate for information technology for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Stanley will speak to this? Oh, sorry. Need a motion, please? And a second. Thank you.
So all of these capital requests would be coming out of reserve funds. The first one, the well cleaning, completes the cleaning of the Callahan Well, town's main water source. This project was started last year with well number one, and it concludes this year with well number two. Funds come from water reserves, and there is no impact on water rates or taxes. Water reserves are currently $1,112,447. Second item for the septic truck, basically the, last year, we voted for $100,000 to purchase a used truck, but when we actually went out to bid that, the truck we were offered didn't suit our needs. So this article would raise additional funds to purchase a new truck. These funds come from the Sewer Impact Fund, and there is no impact on sewer rates or taxes for this purchase. The Sewer Impact Fee Fund is currently $256,527.66. And the last item is for DPW IT. They need new computers with a standard operating system, Windows 10. I forget what Windows they're running now, but it's quite old. This cost will be split three ways: sewer reserves, water reserves, and raise and appropriate. Sewer reserves are currently $129,117.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion 10B. Capital asset schedule within levy borrowing. Move that the town appropriate $6,550 to pay costs of a capital asset schedule for the Select Board, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley will speak to this as well.
This, this article and the next three, I believe, are all borrowing within the levy. So, there is no impact on taxes for these borrowing. Basically, have a set amount in our budget to borrow every year, and this would be within that amount. This project itself would provide a better accounting of the town's capital assets, use life, and replacement values. Things like air packs, trying to think of all the items. Extinguishers, bulletproof vests, all these things. And this schedule really helps us account for everything, work on capital planning, and also can help just impact our credit rating and all those kind of things.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Dan DeKevitz, 130 Hockenham Road. My question to the Select Board is, why are you going out to borrow this? You have 1.9 million in stabilization. 1.9 million. I remember for years, we were trying to get 1 million, but now we have 1.9. My second question is, we used to use the mealstax money for capital stuff, and I don't see any, anything, I know it comes in the second part of the year, but why aren't you waiting till the second, other town meeting to do this? Thank you.
So, yes, capital is typically done in the fall. This is a need that I was identified to do sooner rather than later. So we, we decided we could borrow within the levy to purchase these items, and that was the decision matrix instead of pulling out a capital stabilization. And that's why we did it. Just, that was the choice. Oh, mealstax. Yeah, that, that is considered free cash, so that will be accounted for for the special meeting in the fall. And we would, we would do more capital purchases then.
Any further discussion? As this is a borrowing article, it requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, I've got one against, so two oh seven to one. Okay. Article 10C. Move that the town appropriate $7,000 to pay costs of voting booths for the town clerk, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer- and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of, of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
All right, this article again is borrowing within the levy. No impact on taxes. Town's, uh, voting booths, as we all, uh, what we use at the time of voting. It's not the voting machine, but it's the booths you're actually filling in the circles at. Um, those are all falling apart and are stat- man- state mandated to have. Um, basically, they just get beat up over time because they have to disassemble them and stack them and move them around. Uh, with this money, the clerk may buy five booths, and we were hoping in the future to set up a plan where we could maybe buy one every year and kind of slowly replace them and keep them updated, so... But right now, we need five.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Passes two oh seven to one. Motion Ten D. Move that the town appropriate ten thousand, five hundred dollars to pay costs of furniture for the select board, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
Okay, this is the last article for funding with borrowing within the levy. And this isn't necessarily furniture for the select board, it's furniture for town hall. Um, because of demolition of the Hooker School and moving out of there, had to put a lot more people into town hall, and a lot of that furniture is very large from days gone by. And what we want to do is kind of make things a little more compact, a little more efficient. And so, this would be new furniture to squeeze everybody into town hall and, and have good spaces for them to work. That's the primary, um, need for this, as well as a new table in the actual meeting room, two oh three in the town hall, where, uh, the select board, the planning board, and a lot of other boards and committees meet throughout the week, um, to govern the town.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes two oh six to two. Okay, the next four motions are subject to Proposition Two and a Half override. So, if you, we're going to vote on it this evening, and then it would be subject to another vote, another ballot vote. So, keep that in mind when you're voting. And where are we? Ten E. Right, okay. Motion Ten E. Move that the town appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to pay costs of acquiring the skid steer for the use of the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that the, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half so-called. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? A second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
Okay, this article and the next three, so four articles, are for debt exclusion. And these items have been requested by the DPW. Uh, skid steer, mini excavator, I'll leave the hot box out, and the, uh, ditches, which are all coming up. Basically, to work on repairing and cleaning out some of the ditches in town. This skid steer is a lighter piece of equipment than a lot of the excavator, or, uh, backhoes and excavators the DPW has. So, this would allow us to get into slightly more sensitive areas and, and clean up. This is by debt exclusion, so if this was approved tonight, there would be a vote in early June at the ballot to then, um, approve the borrowing of the equipment. So, the vote tonight is to then go to that election. Uh, so, the impact on taxes for the average single house is five dollars and sixty-two cents a year for five years. The percentage increase on an average single-family tax bill is point one four percent.
Thank you. I forgot to mention at the beginning of this article that the Capital Planning Committee recommends four, zero to zero, except for the DPW ditches, skid steer, hot box, and mini excavator, which is recommended three, one, zero. The Finance Committee recommends all but ditch cleaning, skid steer, hot box unit, and mini excavator, four, zero, zero. Select Board recommends everything, five, zero, zero. Yes?
Yeah, and I just wanted to address real quickly that we put these items... Capital is normally done in the fall. We put these items on this now because we wanted to, um, have an opportunity to clean the ditches in the summer and fall, where if we waited to the fall to get this, we couldn't do anything until next year. So, that's why these are on right now and on for debt exclusion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Psychowski.
Wally Psychowski, one thirty-five Mount Warner Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the ditch cleaning. The ditch isn't heavy, getting pretty well blocked up. Our soils and forests act as a sponge to soak up the extra water.
Speak into the microphone, please, sir.
Our, our soils act as a sponge to soak up the water. If we don't take off the ex- excess water, next time we get a heavy rain or rapid snowmelt, there's no place for the water to go. We get a lot, heavy runoff, we have washouts, and flooded fields and woods. So, I think we should spend the money to clean the ditches.
Thank you.
Jonah Bruegger, twenty-one Norwatt Drive. Did the Finance Committee make a recommendation on these?
They did, and not, not, uh, they, they made a reg- recommendation... Oh, hang on, I don't, I won't, don't want to misspeak. Finance Committee recommends all but the ditch cleaning, skid steer, hot box unit, and mini excavator.
So, did they vote on these particular articles that we're voting on right now? Because it sounds like there's no recommendation.
They voted, they did, they did not vote in favor of this particular article we're talking, or motion we're talking about right now.
Can the Finance Committee explain how they feel about this?
I believe they can.
So, regarding all these items that are debt excluded, these are big-ticket items. We would like to see them go towards the fall. During the fall, we can look at, um, if there's free cash, we can relook and possibly not borrow. If we, if any of these items that are debt excluded goes to ballot, it's going to cost the town at least another three thousand, five hundred to hold another election. So, it's just going to cost us more money. So, we just felt like, not that they're not important, that these are very important items. We just want, we thought it would be better suited if we can do it with the rest of the capital in the fall.
Was that a unanimous decision of the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Edwin Montusco, one sixteen Stockbridge Street. Right now, we're just voting on the skid steer, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, I was going to speak about the ditches.
Please state your name and address, please.
David Phil, two eleven Middle Street.
Thank you.
The ditches I brought up to the Highway Department that, this past fall, and to the select board, um... If we wait until fall, people's properties are getting flooded. We have standing water from Route Nine to Bay Road, Middle Street, across E Street in both of these ditches. Um, along with that standing water, we have mosquito issues, which last year, we voted to do a study on mosquitoes. We get rid of the water, we probably get rid of a lot of mosquitoes. So, I do not think it would be a smart thing for us to be waiting another year to clean these ditches. These ditches should have been maintained throughout the years. Um, we probably shouldn't be spending a hundred thousand dollars at once. It should be a yearly maintenance budget, but we're beyond that now. So, now we have to play catch-up. So, I encourage everybody to pass the hundred thousand dollars for the ditches, so we can move on, get rid of the standing water, and let these heavy rains go down where they should.
Just to be clear, we are not voting on a hundred thousand dollars for ditches right now. We're voting seventy-five thousand dollars for a skid steer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. One ninety, it passes one ninety-three to fifteen. Okay, Motion Ten F. Move that the town appropriate thirty thousand dollars to pay costs of acquiring a hot box unit for the use of the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half so-called. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
Okay, we need to press pause on the, uh, ditch talk. This is a shift. Um, this, this is, uh, hot box to keep asphalt road-based repair materials at the right temperature for road repairs year-round. So, what this means is we can actually put asphalt down to fix potholes and that kind of thing instead of cold patch, which tends to not last that long. Uh, this borrowing is again by debt exclusion, so this would be included in that ballot vote. Um, impact on taxes for the average single-family house is two dollars and twenty-four cents per year for five years. The percentage increase on an average single-family tax bill is point zero five five percent.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, one, motion passes one ninety-six to twelve. Motion Ten G. Move that the town appropriate sixty thousand dollars to pay costs of acquiring a mini excavator for the use of the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half so-called. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
Okay, this is back on the ditches. The DPW requests a new mini excavator for jobs in tight places. Borrowing is by debt exclusion, so the impact on taxes for the average single-family house is four dollars and thirty-eight cents a year for five years. That percentage increase on an average family tax bill is point one one percent.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes one ninety-three to fifteen. Motion Ten H. This is the cleaning and repair of ditches. Move that the town appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to pay costs of cleaning and repairing ditches by the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that the, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half so-called. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
Okay, last capital article here. Uh, town's ditches and culverts need major work, and this article provides funds to begin a multi-year project to reduce flooding and to improve drainage throughout the town. It's my understanding this is mainly for contractual services. Um, borrowing is by debt exclusion, so the impact on taxes for the average single-family house is four twenty-two a year for ten years. The percent increase on an average single-family tax bill is point one percent.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Name and address, please?
Uh, name is David.
Name is David Dudak, 11 Ladies Slipper Lane. First, where are these ditches in, you know, in the town? And about, you know, are we talking about miles of ditches? You know, half a mile of ditches, three miles of ditches? And then the second question is, we just approved equipment, I thought, to work on the ditches, and now this is an additional $100,000 to also work on the ditches? Those are my two questions.
Thank you.
I'm just going to ask our DPW Director, Chris Okafor, maybe to just explain it a little better, if you could. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, we, the equipment that was...
Excuse me, can you tell us who you are, please?
My name is Chris Okafor, DPW Director. The equipment that we just approved, those are equipment that will be used by DPW employees to be able to continue the process of cleaning the dishes. The $100,000 we are requesting includes materials and also contractual labels. Most of the dishes, we don't have the big equipments. We need contractors to help us. When we talk about ditches, is, we're talking about the drainage network in Hadley. In Hadley, the whole drainage network goes through, we call them ditches, but they are also drainage network. They go, and also they go through the roads. Many of them, the covets or big pipes are clogged because of years of non-maintenance. And so some of those covets need to be replaced, or at best cleaned out, what we call a construction, put in a different sleeve or tube. If we can't open the road, that because in order to take care of the old pipes requires maybe shutting down the roads, and the road repairs, then we can also put pipe. These are materials, and they're expensive, and we need contractors to do that. So the $100,000 actually is a down payment for a multi-year program. Get a good feel about this issue of what we are requesting that you should do. If you look at our roads today, because the waters have nowhere to go, they impark the roads. So they are standing water on the roads. And I'm sure many homeowners also having the same problem. But if we are able to begin the process of opening up the drainage and the covets, the water will begin to move as is designed to move, thereby giving us a less problem. So that's what, that's what the $100,000 is for. Thank you.
Mr. Phil.
So as the DPW liaison, just wanted to say a couple of things about this. The question about, is it miles of ditches? It is miles of ditches. The network is throughout the town of Hadley, everywhere from North Hadley down to by the Highway DPW Department. Really, the drainage system hasn't been maintained in decades to the extent that it should have been. And what we're finding is that many of the farm fields, even on E Street, North Hadley, et cetera, are flooded, where farmers can't get in there and plow their fields and plant their crops because the water's backing up from these drainage ditches. Some of the comments that we've had from residents are that, you know, they'll look in a particular drainage ditch and it's dry. Well, the reason is because a half-mile up the road, it's so clogged up with sediment and trees and whatever else, that nothing's flowing through there. And so all of our ditches run through, to the river basically, or to North Hadley Pond. And so that water has to go somewhere. And the problem that we have is, you know, we need to get a start on this. The $100,000 isn't going to come even close to solving the problem. And this is going to take many years to get under control, but this is a down payment on that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mike Sersinski, 10 Laurel Drive, hi, everybody. I assume these ditches go through private property. Under what authority are you going to be able to go on private property to dredge ditches?
Who wants to tackle that one?
So I would say the vast majority, I won't say all of them, just to be safe, but we, the town has easements for these drainage ditches across private property. And so that's how we would access the property.
Mr. Matusko.
Edwin Matusko, 116 Stockbridge Street. A ditch is a living entity. You have to maintain them. They don't fix themselves. They, I'm pleased to hear that the town is finally doing something about this multitude of ditches all over town. It's an important item that has been woefully neglected for a long time, and it's good that the town is addressing the issue, and I urge everyone to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Keith Shannon, 20 Woodlawn Road. Has there been, or will there be, any exploration into state or federal funds for green infrastructure to help with the culvert replacement, ditch cleaning, things like that?
Mr. Nixon.
There are some state grants available for culvert and small bridge replacement. We have an application in right now. The money tends to be short, so the grants are going to be there to supplement, but won't replace the town's obligation to put up money in order to maintain the ditches.
Thank you. Mr. Thayer.
Rick Thayer, 179 Hockenheim Road. Has anybody been brave enough to put a number to the total cost of this? I mean, the $100,000 is a down payment, but is there any sense of where it's, where it's going to be held?
My name is Chris Okafor, DPW Director. We have not put a final number to the total amount that you would take. We are looking at three- to five-year program, and it's going to be in the millions. We don't want to come before the Select Board or before the town meeting with a wrong number. So we're working on putting a good package before the Select Board. Thank you.
Mr. McGee.
One question that I have.
Name and address, please.
Okay. Come closer to the microphone.
Tom McGee, 43 Old Mountain Road. Question I have is it would appear that this money being spent for the Department of Public Works would indicate the Department of Public Works isn't being funded accurately or properly if we have to go to Proposition 2.5 to pay for the needs that the Department of Public Works needs to carry out their function in maintaining the infrastructure that they're tasked with taking care of. I noted that in the book that I received, the tax rate was 1157 in fiscal year 216. Then it went to 1256. And now by voting on all of these things for the Department of Public Works, you're increasing the tax rate in the town of Hadley. Thank you.
Yes.
Tony Lynn Morelli, 127 Rocky Hill Road. I heard culvert replacement, so I just wanted to put in a plug as we get wetter and wetter weather and bigger and bigger storms that we think to the future, as well as we're thinking about our culvert replacement and not just replacing in kind.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes 200 to 8. Okay, moving on to Article 11. And this article is recommended by the Finance Committee 400 by the Select Board 500. Move that the town amend Chapter 86, Section 86-9 relating to tax liens revolving funds as administered by the Treasurer by increasing the annual expenses allowed from $5,000 to $7,500, and increasing the maximum allowable balance as of June 30th from $10,000 to $12,000. Molly Keegan will speak to this.
Oh, sorry.
Motion, please. Second. Thank you.
So the Treasurer's revolving fund was set up about a year ago with the standard limitations of $5,000 in annual expenditures and a $10,000 cap in the fund, meaning that any excess over $10,000 at the end of fiscal year would be turned over to the town. The purpose of the revolving fund is to cover legal expenses associated with tax title collections. Those expenses are added to the taxpayer's debt and are fully recouped by the town when the tax title is redeemed. In FY19, tax title collections were unusually high, and this resulted in over $14,000 in legal expenses being returned to the town. In the same year, new legal expenses have been relatively low at $3,000. FY2020, legal expenses are expected to be higher. So the request is number one, to raise the amount of recouped legal expenses that can be kept in the revolving account from $10,000 to $12,000, and to increase the amount that can be spent in a single year from $5,000 to $7,500 for the time when it becomes necessary to initiate any sort of legal action. So this is not part of the Treasurer's budget, and no additional funding is being requested from the town.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 12. Finance Committee recommends 400. Select Board recommends 500. Move that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 200A, Section 9A relating to the disposition of unclaimed property. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Joyce Chungel will speak to this.
This is a housekeeping article to allow the town to dispose of unclaimed property, and most of it is in the form of uncashed checks. In 2018, we had a total of 55 uncashed checks amounting to $3,600. So rebates, things like that, that people did not cash their checks. So we put that money back into the general fund.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, we got one? I'm sorry. Motion passes. Thank you. Article 13. Finance Committee recommends 400. Select Board recommends 500. Move that the town raise and appropriate $19,000 to add to the Police Detail Revolving Fund established under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53(c). Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Joyce Chungel will speak to this as well.
Police private duties details are paid out of a special revolving fund into which outside vendors and contractors pay for projects that require police presence. The fund is regularly depleted, eventually to be replenished, and police officers sometimes have to wait for their pay, six to eight weeks sometimes. So we want to increase this amount of money so that they can get paid in a timely fashion. This fund will be used extensively for the Mass. DOT Bay Road Bridge Replacement Project and the Mass. DOT Route 9 Widening Project, which will be taking place in the next year or two. The fund currently has a balance of $21,000, but that really depletes quite quickly. So there's no increase, so people, there's never going to be any taxes or money added to it, it's already money that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Horowitz.
Shell Horowitz, 16 Barstoline. Was the select woman talking about the bridge that was recently already replaced on Bay Road? Are they doing that one again? How many years are we going to be stuck with this one this time?
Mass. DOT is going to replace that bridge in its entirety starting in summer 2021, and they are telling me that it's going to take two years to happen. They are also going to be widening Route 9 from Town Hall to the malls. So we're trying to coordinate this in such... We're trying to coordinate with Mass. DOT to make sure those two projects don't happen at the same time. But as you can see, we have some major work that's coming in our future. We need this revolving fund to be robust enough to be able to preserve public safety by hiring police details.
Yes, sir.
David Dudak, 11 Ladies Slipper Lane. This not, if vendors are paying, I'm not sure if vendors are paying policemen, why are we in the middle of this? Why is the taxpayer in the middle of this?
It's a cash flow. We want to make sure that our police officers are paid. And we do get a percentage, and administrative cost does come back from the town from the vendors also. So we're actually making money on it.
But how long do you have to wait for the vendors to pay? I mean, why aren't the vendors paying?
Well, we try to get them to pay in a timely fashion, but this is just to make sure that our officers are being paid in a timely fashion for doing their job, don't you think?
I think it's better if the vendors actually pay.
Well, we are. I mean, but, you know, you can only stronghold a vendor for so long. I mean, try to, try to get the money from DOT, or the electric company, or Verizon, or Charter, or any of the other ones that we have. We're just trying to make sure that there's a continuation of cash flow so that everybody gets paid timely. Nobody gets, you know, it's nice, you like to get paid, don't you?
Understand, right? Walmart sells their items before they actually sell them. Why can't, why can't we, meaning the town, or the police department, whoever billed, I'm assuming a bill goes out to the vendor, collect the money?
Because we're not exactly sure the exact timeframe that they're going to be there. So you can't bill them for something that already hasn't happened.
You can get a deposit, though.
Mr. Phil.
The Select Board just approved a late fee, a 15% late fee for these vendors after 45 days, a couple of weeks ago. This is basically acting as a, the town handles the payments to our police officers for these private duty details. So this is basically acting as a credit card for the town for short-term funds. And we do, as Joyce mentioned, make a 10% administrative fee from these vendors. So we do make a little bit of money off them, but it's, the issue is officers having to wait two months to get paid for the work they're doing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Article 14. Community Preservation Act Committee article. Move that the town appropriate $210,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund for the purpose of acquiring an Agricultural Preservation Restriction, APR, on all or a portion of the partial property known as the Shala Farm, Assessors Map 12D, Parcel 8, Assessors Map 13, Parcel 49, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town as may be necessary for the town to be a co-owner of said APR. Conditions include, the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA General Fund. Community Preservation Committee recommends 801. Community Preservation Committee recommends 801, Finance Committee recommends 400. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Somebody from the CPC want to speak to this?
I'm actually speaking as the Chair of the Conservation Commission. This was an application that was put forth. Agricultural preservation has been one of the items that has been key in this community. We are the leader in the state. This is preserving 170 acres of farmland off of Cummins and Shattuck Road, and it's in partnership with the Kestrel Land Trust and Mass. Department of Agriculture. When we put a property in APR, we are buying the development rights, and therefore, this property will be permanently preserved. The only way it could be removed from this preservation would be a town vote and an act of legislature. This is a piece of property that the town has been looking at and trying to acquire for years. We are actually doing somewhat a higher percentage now because this is an important property. It has wildlife habitat, it has rare species, it has 95 acres of statewide or prime agricultural soils. So, this, we feel that this is an important property that needs to be preserved.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, this article, in conjunction with the next article, Article 15, are going to be, the monies are combined together to allow this process to happen. Just so everybody understands that this is not the be-all, end-all, if this is, the whole process is to happen, we have to vote on the next one as well. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Article 15, Finance Committee recommends 400, Select Board recommends 500. Move that the town transfer $56,590 from transfer of development rights and transfer $93,410 from Conservation Land Fund for the purpose of acquiring an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on all or a portion of the parcel of property known as the Shala Farm, Assessors Map 12D, Parcel 8, Assessors Map 13, Parcel 49, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town as may be necessary for the town to be a coholder of said APR. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Anybody want to speak to this?
Paulette Kuzdeba, 49th Road, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Again, this is an important piece of property. The state is paying $360,000, which is 50% of this. The town share is approximately $360,000. We asked for the money from CPA, and then the remainder comes from transfer of development rights and our Conservation Land Fund. These are, as I said, these are funds that are available for this particular purpose, and we feel that this is an important property.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Article 16 and 17 are a similar situation on a different piece of land. Article 16 is recommended by the CPC 900 and by the Finance Committee 400. Move that the town appropriate $83,091 from the CPA General Fund for the purpose of acquiring an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on all or a portion of the parcel of the property known as the Nabala Farm, Assessors Map 4F, Parcel 15, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town as may be necessary for the town to be a coholder of said APR. Conditions include: the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA General Fund. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Paulette, do you want to talk to this one?
Hi. Paulette Kuzdeba, 49th Road, Chair of the Conservation Commission. This purchase of another APR would restrict or preserve 38 acres of prime farmland off of East Street. This is a partnership with the Mass. Department of Agriculture. The property is a large block of longtime family farm. It is active farmland, runs north to south from Route 9 to Bay Road, and the back border includes the Fort River, which is an important wildlife corridor, rare species habitat for State and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It's less than a half a mile from the Callahan Wells and is within the Zone 2 of the Callahan Wells. The Conservation Commission is partnering with Mass. Department of Agriculture on the project, and we are also using transfer of development right funds for this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 17, Finance Committee recommends 400, Select Board recommends 500. Move that the town transfer $20,773 from the Transfer of Development Rights Fund for the purpose of acquiring an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on all or a portion of the parcel of the property known as the Nabala Farm, Assessors Map 4F, Parcel 15, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town as may be necessary for the town to be a coholder of said APR. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion and a second.
Paulette Kuzdeba, 49th Road, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Again, this is the same property. Just so you know, the Department of Agriculture is paying 84.26%. The town share is 15.74%, and we're using transfer of development right funding so that this will not impact the town or take any further reserves.
Yes, sir.
Andy Morris, 45 Roosevelt Street. I'm Chair of the CPA Committee. I just want to say with the purchase of these two APRs, that'll put Hadley over 4,000 protected acres, the most in the state, and will achieve the goal that Alexandra Dawson set out for us many years ago.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Article 18 is recommended by the CPC 900, Finance Committee 400. Move that the town transfer $500 to the Historical Commission to fund an inspection and preservation plan for two historic 1740-era maps of Hadley. Funding would come from the Historical Set-Aside Fund. Conditions include: the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA Historical Set-Aside Fund. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. Andy Morris, 45 Roosevelt Street in Hadley. Hadley has two incredible treasures of its past, the Goth Bible, which is in the Historical Society, and these two Deer Skin Maps, 1750 maps of two portions of Hadley. They were found in a safe. Nobody knows where they came from, and we think that they need to be preserved, so we would like to take them to the Williamstown Art Museum and have an assessment done so future generations can see and view the maps, and they can be preserved safely. After we get the plan, I will come back, or the Historical Commission will come back to ask for more money to implement the plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Article 19, Recommended by the CPC 711, Recommended by the Finance Committee 400. Move that the town transfer $32,000 to the Hadley Park and Recreation Department for work as proposed on application dated 1/9/19 for finishing construction of Zoturka Park. Funding would come from the CPA General Fund. Conditions include: the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA General Fund. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anybody want to speak to this? Mr. Klapacki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andy Klapacki, Hadley Park and Recreation Commission.
What's your address, please?
60 Turner Road.
Thank you.
So, last summer, while the project was underway, there were some drainage issues that were encountered, as well as some unforeseen obstacles under the ground. These things had to be removed, and Phil brought in and replaced. At the time, to complete that part of the project, the Commission voted to divert some money that had been set aside for wrapping it up, including paving the parking lot and the trail on the parcel on the park. So, this money is intended to help complete the project, to pave the parking lot and to pave that trail and to complete this phase of the Zoturka Park renovation. And it will, again, coming from CPA, it will have no impact on taxes, and the Commission appreciates the support the town has provided so far to this project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Article 20, CPC recommends 6, 2 to 1. Finance Committee has no recommendation. Move that the town transfer $1,517 to the Friends of Lake Warner per the application as amended 1/17/19 to construct a boardwalk on conservation land bordering Lake Warner. Funding would come from the CPA General Fund. Conditions include: the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA General Fund. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
A second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Would somebody like to speak to this? Yes, sir.
Peter Mulady, 144 Mount Warner Road, representing the Friends of Lake Warner. I wrote this proposal. Any questions you have, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I could add that this is perched swamp, which is a unique environmental ecology, pretty much restricted to Hadley, Sunderland, and Amherst in the whole world, and there are two endangered species that are involved, and this is designed both to protect them and to protect the swamp.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Article 21, Another CPA Article. CPC recommends 8, 0 to 1. Finance Committee recommends 4, 0, 0. Move that the town transfer $810 to the Friends of Lake Warner per the application dated 12/29/18 for water testing of Lake Warner for conservation purposes. Funding would come from the CPA General Fund. Conditions include: the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA General Fund. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Peter Mulady, 144 Mount Warner Road, representing the Friends of Lake Warner. This is a bit of a problem. The lake, as most of you know, is the subject of all the rejects of Amherst and some 68 square miles of watershed, which is highly polluted, and we have a situation where we have E. coli contamination of the lake. We like to notify the public when it's too dangerous to even vote on the lake, which happened, to my count, seven times last year. And quite frankly, this is a public health, public safety issue, and should be cared for by the town. However, it came to my attention early this year that there was no provision for such this year. That's why we made this request. It's my understanding that we won't be able to request this money next year from the CPA. Their rules don't allow it. Something must be done by the town of Hadley at some point in the future to notify the public of public safety hazards in the water of Lake Warner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Article 22 is another CPA article. Community Preservation Committee recommends 8, 0, 1. Finance Committee recommends 4, 0, 0. Move that the town transfer $185,000 to the Hadley School Committee/School Department for Phase 1 of improvements of the Hopkins Academy playing fields per the proposal dated 12/18/2018. Funding would come from the CPA General Fund. Conditions include: the applicant would have two years to spend the funding, and if not spent, any remaining funds would revert back to CPA General Fund. Do I have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anybody want to speak to this?
Annie Kenzie, Superintendent of Schools. The CPA has previously set aside some money for the renovation of the Hopkins Academy athletic fields. This additional money and money from private donations, private donations will make up roughly 25% of the anticipated expenditures for Phase 1, would put us in a position to start renovation, go out to bid this summer and start renovation as soon as a bid was awarded. The student athletes and students at Hopkins Academy would greatly appreciate support from the town for this. Part of the Phase 1 renovations will include half of a community walking path being completed. In Phase 2, the rest of the walking path will be completed. The fields will be available for town use at any time when the students aren't using them for athletic events, and the walking path also would be available to the town. So, on behalf of the students of Hopkins and student athletes, thank you for your support to date and for any additional support you can provide.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Diane Stengel, 43 Breckenridge. I just have a general question. I know we have, I've heard rumors, I'm sure they're reasonably close to the accurate, that we have lots of money in the Community Preservation Fund in Hadley, and we can spend it, you know, we spent a lot of money today on community preservation, and I don't disagree with any of it. I'm not trying to raise any of them in a visual way. Is there someone that can provide us with some general information as to what is available in the funds right now, or just other general information to give a perspective on all of this?
Sure. I know there's somebody here that can. Andy, please.
Andy Morris, 45 Roosevelt Street. Thank you for your question. Let's see. We have $511,227 approved from the CPA Fund, but not yet. from the CPA Fund but not yet spent. The open space set aside is five-hundred-and-ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-three. Historic is fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-three. Housing is one-hundred-fifty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine. So if you have some ideas about how to spend this housing money, please call me. The General Fund is one-point-eight-three-million. Available for spending is two-point-zero-three-million. State distributions this year were one-hundred-fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-five, over twenty-five-thousand dollars in interest, and the town contribution was two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-one dollars, oh, I'm sorry, two-hundred-sixty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars. The average statewide distribution was nineteen percent, but Hadley received a forty-three-point-five percent distribution from the state. We have seven applications tonight totaling over a hundred, five-hundred-thousand dollars, our most ever.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Article twenty-three, Select Board recommends this five-zero-zero. Moved that the town authorize the Hadley Select Board to grant a non-exclusive utility easement to N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy over a portion of town-owned land identified as parcel forty-one-dash-thirty-two, known as Forty-Six Middle Street, and to allow N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy to utilize the town's interest in the easement described in the easement relocation agreement recorded at Book thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-thirty, page one-oh-two in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds for purposes of a non-exclusive utility easement. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Stanley.
This easement will be the easement for utilities, I guess primarily electric, to the senior center from Route Nine. This easement is on top of the easement we have with the Legion for that purpose, and we need to grant this to Eversource to allow the utilities to be run to the senior center.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Article twenty-four, Select Board recommends four-zero-one. Moved that the town transfer the Select Board, yeah, sure, moved that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to release land protected under Article Ninety-seven of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Do I have a motion? A second? Motion and a second.
So, Article twenty-four, actually, the Select Board has voted that if Article twenty-four does not pass, we voted unanimously to remove Article twenty-five from the warrant, because they're somewhat linked. So, the background on this is in 2014, the, at Fall Town Meeting, the Town Meeting voted to sell North Hadley Hall. And we've been in the process of trying to do that for many years. Most recently, we hired a professional real estate firm to handle the sale of North Hadley Village Hall and the Ballfields next to it, but due to a recent court case in Westfield, it appears that the Ballfields itself are under Article Ninety-seven for protection for recreational land. So what we're going to do is petition the state legislature to remove that land from the protected status, and we're going to possibly, if this article passes and the following one, replace it with some land from Zoturka Park. The reason this is critical is the sale of North Hadley Village Hall is on hold until we can determine the status of this land and get it released from a protective status, because without the land going along with the North Hadley Village Hall, the value of the property is significantly decreased.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Dwyer, three-eighty-eight River Drive in deep North Hadley, and I drive by this twice a day. I submit the situation is a little more complicated. At the time the town voted to sell North Hadley Hall, the applicability of Article Ninety-seven to the playing fields was unknown. By way of background, Article Ninety-seven is an amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution that says recreational land is the common property of all of the citizens of the Commonwealth and is to be preserved and protected. The property in North Hadley, the Ballfield, it turns out, more than just being affected by the Westfield case, Smith versus Westfield, which was decided by the Supreme Judicial Court last year, more than just being affected, the land was taken by eminent domain explicitly for the purposes of being a playground to the school that was then located in North Hadley Hall. So it's more than just a property that has been used as a playground, it was acquired by the town originally as a playground. I don't think we knew this when we voted. I know I didn't, and I'm a real estate lawyer. But I did some research, I found that deed from the twenties, the explicit taking by eminent domain for playground purposes. And I think we're missing an opportunity here by just charging ahead and seeing this as a problem to be solved instead of an opportunity to be developed, because we're not going to get a one-acre lakefront parcel back once this is sold. I do want to jump ahead, because as was mentioned, this is connected to Zoturka Park. I would submit, and I'll defer to Town Council to a degree, but I have my own opinion on this, that under the holding of Smith versus Westfield, you don't have Zoturka Park as a chip. It is already protected. So you can't take one piece out of protection and substitute for it another piece that is already protected. So I would suggest that we put a hold on this and use this as an opportunity to rethink some of the options. Now, I recognize that we have a Realtor for the first time for North Hadley Hall, but, you know, tearing it down is an option, too. And then we would have an acre, almost an acre and a half, acre and a quarter, of municipal land with lakefront. I know it's not accessible to the lake right now, but I'm sure it could be made accessible. And frankly, it seems like a much more appealing access point than the very crowded boat launch by the bridge at twenty feet upstream from the dam.
Thank you. Andy?
Andy Morris Friedman, forty-five Roosevelt Street. I'm just speaking now as a citizen, it's not a CPA issue. It's been very difficult to sell this building, one thing has gone wrong after another. Do you ever get the feeling the universe is trying to send you a message?
No.
My second point is that these two linked articles are sort of, in my mind, against the spirit of Article Ninety-seven, which is to keep towns from reducing their amount of recreational land. Right now, we have seven acres, one of which is protected and six of which are not. If we vote in favor of these two articles, we will have six acres protected and one acre that's sold. So that's really one acre less anyhow you look at it. And then my final point is, some people feel that there is a town right-of-way between the church and North Hadley Hall, which would also be a stumbling block for the sale, that also needs to be taken care of regardless of these two warrant articles. And I just thought of another one. If Article twenty-four fails, I would still like to vote on Article twenty-five, because I think Zoturka Park deserves that protection. And if we do sell North Hadley Hall, we should buy another acre somewhere else, which is what the program is designed to do.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Ginger Goldsberry, two-forty-five River Drive, and I live almost next door to that, the only green, open green space left in North Hadley. There is nowhere else for children to play. And when I moved there, they were still playing Little League there, not very often, and there was a fence to keep them out of the street. And that's sort of gone by the way. What I've noticed in the last ten years since I've lived there for nineteen years, is there are increasing numbers of children in the neighborhood. In fact, I just met another new one, little one, recently, and there are just more and more of them, more young families, and they can actually walk to that park, and they can actually play there, and putting up a fence doesn't cost that much money. And yes, it could be, hopefully someday, an access to the pond, because there really isn't much of one now. And there was access to the pond in nineteen sixteen when we first had that property, there are pictures showing that. So I think it's, and as previous, one of the previous speakers said, if it's, once it's gone, it's gone, and it won't come back again. That property is used for parking during the annual ice fishing derby, which brings in hundreds of people, children and families and picnicking, and everyone parks there. If that is gone, so is the fishing derby, which has been going on for almost fifteen years. So it's a valuable piece of property to keep as a park, as a recreational facility, and I agree that it should be put off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Horowitz.
Shel Horowitz, sixteen Barstow Lane. I am planning to vote no on this. I grew up in an area where water access that was taken for granted two, three hundred years ago had been severely compromised. I grew up in New York City, okay? New York City is surrounded by rivers and other bodies of water. And there are really very few places where New Yorkers can actually get to the water. And I think having town control of, I don't want to use the word beach, but, you know, a waterfront access point is something very special, and we should not fritter it away lightly.
Thank you. Mr. Phil, do you want to speak? Mr. Waskevitz, go ahead.
David Waskevitz, one-twenty-six Middle Street. I just want to remind everybody, not too long ago, we purchased ten acres just up the street that we had originally planned for recreation. It's still available, if the town feels it's necessary to preserve it in a definite way, this would be one way to do it. The land going down to the lake in that area, if you're going to make it for recreation, should be made accessible, but you're going to find it's rather steep, and you're going to spend a lot of area zigzagging back and forth just to get to the water, so I'm not seeing how this is a useful location. The building that we're trying to sell needs parking, and that's a zoning regulation, Planning Board, that needs a lot of land to go with it in order to make that building useful. So that's one of the reasons we sort of have to let go of that land if we want to make use of that property for something other than the town property.
Thank you. Mr. Phil.
So just in response to a couple of the questions, to the best of our knowledge, and based on speaking with the Realtor and attorneys, there is no easement or town right-of-way to, through that property. Granted, as it was owned by the town, we could use it to access the lake, but there is no deeded easement on that property to the lake. Part of the reason that we've been steadfastly pursuing selling this property is repairing the building is going to be somewhere along the lines of three million dollars. And it just wasn't something that we wanted to invest in. And so since 2014, when the Town Meeting voted to sell the property, we've basically removed the entire maintenance budget, other than just bare bones, you know, enough to keep the pipes from freezing. We have fire equipment that's stored in the garages there. But other than that, we haven't maintained or done anything to keep the building up, because the plan was to sell the property, and it doesn't make sense to, you know, put money in if you're going to sell it. So, basically, in the five or so years that the property has been sitting in this process, I'm sure that price tag has increased. I can let the Municipal Building Committee speak to that aspect of things, but...
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Hallwitt, one-thirty-four West Street. I'm, this is a legal question. If, when the Town Meeting voted to sell the North Hadley Town Hall, if it was not known that the land there was protected under Article Ninety-seven, does that void the vote?
Can you answer that?
In my opinion, the vote that was taken would still be valid, but in terms of what someone could do it, do with it if they purchased it, this Article Ninety-seven issue would have to be sorted out first. But I would not say that the vote in 2014 was invalid.
Can you give me any legal reasoning for why that would be the case?
The vote was simply to authorize the Board of, I assume not having in front of me, authorize the selectmen to see if they could convey the property. And so that authorization is still there.
I mean, I'm just, I'm a layperson, I'm not a lawyer, but I would think that people might have voted differently if they had realized that that land was protected in that way. I would think there would be lots of different reasoning that might go on in people's heads, and I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if you're sure about that reasoning.
Well, all I can tell you is that, in my opinion, that vote to authorize the selectmen to seek whether this could be sold or not, that authorization is still valid.
Thank you.
Michelle Morris Friedman, forty-five Roosevelt Street. I have a couple of questions about the space. One is, the fire base, I could imagine, could be taken down, and that would give you additional parking there. The other question is, would it be possible to sell the property and a small amount if needed for parking, but keep the majority of the park in Chapter Ninety-seven-A? I can't imagine filling that whole space as a parking lot with the number of units that could fit into North Hadley Village Hall.
Thank you. Who wants to answer that question? I have an answer, but I don't...
So we did find a prospective buyer for the property. The town did try to reserve parking for the, for the buyer, but also preserved some of the open space for the town. That deal fell apart. So we did try that, it didn't, didn't work out. So we're trying to go at this in another way.
I'll just speak from my Capitol Committee side as opposed to my personal side, because I think they probably differ, but taking on this, you know, basically if we vote down this Article Ninety-seven transfer, it really ties us to North Hadley Hall, I think. I don't think the property is sellable without that land, just because of zoning bylaws and those kind of things. But that does put the town on the hook for doing something with that building, whether it's tearing it down, whether it's repairing it, all those things. That's a lot of capital that the town would have to come up with in addition to all the other capital items we have coming up. And if you're thinking about taxes and tax rates and all those kind of things, if we commit to, to not transferring the Article Ninety-seven, we're committing to increasing taxes and doing more with this property.
Mr. Dwyer.
I don't think we've heard from...
I don't think we've heard from Select Board in Chucklow yet. I'll defer.
Thank you.
I've been trying not to get up here. Back in 2014, I think I spearheaded the, to sell North Hadley Hall because at that point in time, the town did not have over $2 million to put into that building. And it wasn't going to do us any good to try to. We had painted it, pigeons came back, we had bad paint on there, with lead in it, there was many things that had gone wrong there. And we were trying to build a sub-fire station up there because that one had become inadequate at that point. The problem is, is that property is that, the Planning Board does have a say in what that property is used for. And usually, on most of the projects, they require green space also with their buildings of projects, whether it be housing or whatever it might be deemed necessary. There's a lot of different things of what that property could be used for. But again, it would have to go through planning, and it might even have to go through the ZBA. So there's still a long process here, and it's something that the town cannot afford. As you've seen tonight on the different projects that we asked you to support just by doing drainage ditches, things that have been neglected over a number of years. And we're trying to play catch-up on a lot of the things that should be taken care of. And old buildings are not one of our things that we really want to do at this time. So I would ask you to support this so that we can sell that piece of property.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Bill Dwyer, 388 River Drive. And I say this as a person whose father attended middle school in the North Hadley Hall by horse-drawn bus. And based, building off some of what was said here tonight, yeah, you're not maintaining it. That's not prime marketing for it. Let's face it, we can't keep everything, but that doesn't mean we have to sell everything. That building can come down. That's a worthwhile investment to get that open space in North Hadley Center.
Thank you. Yes.
Ginger Goldsberry, 245 River Drive. I just would like to remind you, David, that when, the last time we had someone about to buy that building, there was a discussion about using some of that land for parking and the green space, and some would remain open for recreation. And we had that discussion with him. It might not have been the town, but certainly those of us and friends of Lake Warner were involved in that. And the reason it fell through had nothing to do with the parking. It had more to do with the building usage that didn't go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeKevitz?
Dan DeKevitz, 130 Hockenham Road. I don't know, I think I might have been involved back in 2014. But Mr. Dwyer brings out an excellent point. We could perhaps knock that building down, and that could be available for townspeople's use for 100 years. Kids going out to play have a boat access, just like they said. There's, where else can you get access on North Hadley Pond? And it's a beautiful spot. It's an absolutely beautiful spot, and I wouldn't want to see a house up there or any kind of municipal building. And I agree with Mr. Dwyer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Harley, 293 River Drive. I'm wondering if anybody has got a rough idea of what it would cost to tear it down?
I don't think we have that number, but just reviewing the contract that we did for sending this out for sale, there are tremendous amounts of historical restrictions on that building if we were to sell it. So I don't know if anybody here from the Historical wants to speak up about tearing it down. From the, everything we've been given so far, Historical Commission does not want to tear down that building. I don't know if anybody's here from...
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi. I am not speak, Bill Dwyer, 388 River Drive. I am not speaking for the Historical Commission. I can tell you that the building is on the National Register of Historic Places. I could also tell you, having consulted a historic preservation specialist, that demolition of a building on the National Register of Historic Places is allowed.
Any further discussion? We have no further discussion. We don't need to call a question. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Motion fails. Okay. So what, how do we get rid of...
Mr. Moderator, I have a point of order. Is it possible to ask...
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
Recognized. Tell me who you are, please. Tell us who you are.
Andy Morris, ribbon 45 Roosevelt Street, to Hadley. Is it possible to call for a vote on Article 25?
I got to get that clarified for you. Hang on, please. Okay, everybody. Understood, but, okay. Select Board wants to remove Article 25 from the warrant. I cannot do that by just saying so, so we're going to, I need to get a motion from them to remove the article in a second. No, it's not. You guys can't do it. It's not the Select Board's decision. We have to get it out here. Okay? So how do we do this? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to pass over Article 25 and a second. Excuse me, who are you?
Don't you have it committed to memory yet? Bill Dwyer, 388 River Drive. In support of the motion, I would say that my, my reading of Smith versus Westfield, which applied Article 95 by, Article 97 by usage, applies to Zaterka Park. I think it's a moot point. Zaterka Park is protected. It doesn't need to be protected. It doesn't need the vote of town meeting to protect it. It is.
Thank you. Mr. Washkevitz?
I was the one vote to move this article forward, to let you people decide whether we wanted to put the preservation restrictions against Zaterka Park. So that's why we're all here.
Okay. Any further discussion? We are voting on passing over Article 25. All those in favor signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 25 is removed. Okay. Move that the town amend the bylaws of the code of the town of Hadley as delineated in Article 26 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 2, 2019, and incorporated by reference herein. Select Board recommends this for 1 to 0. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion and a second.
So the Planning Board and the Chief of Police have asked to strengthen an already-existing general bylaw prohibiting the consumption of marijuana on public property. The change to the bylaws affect enforcement and penalties. Okay, yeah, this article is in companion with the next article, a zoning article regulating the adult-use marijuana. Chief, we had a couple of questions. I don't know if you'd like to address them all.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Mason, I'm the Chief of Police here. Just to clarify a couple of things, the Planning Board did approach me several months back. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, when all the new marijuana laws went into effect and were being changed and altered, they made a suggestion that any town that had a bylaw regulating the use of marijuana in public places adjusted as you see here. They asked that, I review it for workability, to see if it was appropriate to, for us to enforce it, because the police are the enforcing officers of it. They also asked Town Council to review it to make sure that it was well within the guidelines set forth by 935 CMR 500, which is what all the marijuana laws are based under. As I see the way that this is written, what the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has recommended, and what the Planning Board has put together, I reviewed several other cities and towns that have the same bylaw, and they are almost exactly the same. As far as I'm concerned, it is well within what is allowable. Town Council, I believe, concurred, so this is what they are recommending to put forward. Going along with that, this is an amendment to a bylaw. So just so everybody is aware, the town already had a bylaw of this nature in place. This is simply what was recommended to strengthen or adjust it. I'm not really sure what the language they used to do that was, but this is what they're suggesting. I understand that there was a question, at least one question, last time as it related to public housing, apartment complexes and things like that, as far as the use, the enforcement of this bylaw. Simply put, if I understand the question correctly, pub, just because it's called public housing, does not mean that it is public for the enforcement of this bylaw. That is not how this works. Your, your home is your castle. If it is your residence, and it is the curtilage of your property, as we call it, meaning the property that is immediately adjacent to your residence, that is not public property, and the bylaw will not be able to be enforced in those areas. So I hope that answers the question. There is one caveat I'd like to add to that, just so no one goes back and tells the management of their properties that the police chief said it was okay to smoke marijuana in their apartments. Apartment complexes, public housing, things like that, they are able to regulate whether or not you can smoke within these buildings. So please make sure that you check with the management of the property before you do so. I would encourage you to find alternative types of marijuana to use if they don't allow smoking. Just don't drive when you're doing it.
Chief, for, for example, Greenleaf Apartments has a lease agreement with all of their citizens, just like Golden Court and Berkway, and similar properties like that.
Yeah, they, they could take civil action against you. They could evict you if you are, if you violate the lease, if that is one of the rules that they have. So I would, like I said, I would encourage you to check with them first, but for the purposes of enforcing this bylaw, that is not, that is not what we, what we intend on doing.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
David Dudak, 11 Lays, St. Berlaine. I just like to know, are the penalties, are the enforcement penalties the same for alcohol? I mean, the first part of this looks similar to the regulations for alcohol. You know, you can't have it in your car, open containers in the car, and so on. Are the enforcement penalties the same for alcohol as they are for marijuana, or are
Chief, can you answer that?
If you really would. A lot of the alcohol bylaws, Mike Mason, Chief of Police, a lot of the alcohol bylaws that we have really have more to do with age restrictions than anything else. There's a, for example, there's a MGL for open container of alcohol in a vehicle. It's a $500 civil fine. It's not a criminal penalty. So really, it depends on the area that you, that you're using the substance, the age that you are, whether or not you're violating a bylaw, whether or not you're violating an MGL. It's Massachusetts, we love to make laws here, so it's, it's really, it really depends on the situation. It's kind of a hard, hard question to answer.
Thank you. Mr. Matusko?
Edwin Matusko, 116 Stockford Street. A point of clarification, does that mean I got to lock my glove compartment or unlock it? I, I, that's kind of vague in the first, second, third line up from the bottom on page nine. It's, shall not include a motor vehicle's trunk locked glove compartment or living quarters of a house. Does that mean I got to...
Shall not include, correct. If it's locked, then it's not considered an...
Who locks their glove compartment?
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Article 27 is a zoning bylaw. This requires two-thirds majority. All I have to do is find the motion. Okay. Article 27, move that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the town of Hadley as delineated in Article 27 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 2, 2019, and incorporated by reference herein. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Mr. Maxmowski?
Jim Maxmowski, 12 North Water Drive. The Planning Board unanimously recommends approval of this article. I'm going to explain it in a minute, but so we don't confuse you, Bill Dwyer is going to explain. This is not your typical zoning article. Bill will explain.
Bill Dwyer, 388 River Drive, and a member of the Planning Board. Actually, I'm clerk of the Planning Board, Jim's chairman. Normally, in zoning, in a town like Hadley, our zoning bylaw is written such that if something is not allowed, it is prohibited without being explicitly listed. However, in Massachusetts, the General Court has authorized the adult use of marijuana. It came to a statewide vote, the state supported it, the town of Hadley supported it. So therefore, adult-use marijuana, as with medical-use marijuana to a degree, is sort of in a separate category. So the town has the option of not regulating it, regulating it, or prohibiting it. However, in order to prohibit adult-use growth or sale in Massachusetts, you have to go through an explicit procedure. Voting down a bylaw is not that procedure. There would have to be a vote of town meeting to prohibit adult use. There'd have to be a ballot vote to prohibit adult use. That is off the table. No one is proposing that. The question before us today is whether we want to have local regulation of adult-use marijuana or no local regulation of adult-use marijuana. If we do not adopt this bylaw, the adult-use growth, cultivation, and sale of marijuana will be regulated... will be regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations, together with what site plan approval we might have. We would have very limited regulatory authority above and beyond what we have with regard to any other business. So, this bylaw, which was developed in consultation with probably the most actively engaged group of citizens that we've seen on any bylaw, is your option to impose reasonable regulations on the adult use of marijuana, sale, cultivation, use in Hadley. Well, actually, sale and cultivation. The zoning bylaw has nothing to do with use. What you do with it once you buy it is up to you.
Okay. Very briefly, if more questions come up, we'll answer them, but briefly, this bylaw, like Bill says, been, been worked on with an ad hoc group of committee from, from different parts of the town for probably the last eight or nine months. And it will regulate where it can be grown and where it can be sold. It'll be sold basically in the, in the business areas like anything else, but growing agriculture, marijuana has been decide, decided to not be an agricultural commodity by the mass legislature. Therefore, there is some regulation that the town has where it can be grown. And right now, the way this bylaw is written in the ag residential districts in town, it'll be grown inside of a greenhouse or a building that will not be exposing night light, so it's gonna be kind of a dark sky. It'll be either natural sunlight or lights, but it won't be a illuminated thing at night where it's gonna be imposing on anybody. And that's, size is limited to 5,000 square feet. There will be open grow like you grow tobacco or corn is not allowed under this bylaw. There's a lot of unknowns in growing marijuana. The biggest one is everybody says, you read different articles in the newspaper, on the internet and so on and so forth, and they say it stinks like a skunk. And it's a horrendous stink and you go on and on and on. We don't know if that's really true or false. The idea being here with this bylaw, we're gonna start small, regulate it, see what the real story is and probably come back to you in a year or so with an updated bylaw that's going to allow a bigger facility, open grow, where we're gonna find out what we have is just what we want. We don't know and we're trying to, it's a lot easier to open it up down the road than to control it and shut it down, down the road. That's why we're starting very conservative and we're trying to see what, see what the real story is, because no matter who we talk to, you hear everything from, oh, it smells like roses to it smells like a dirty skunk. Well, that's a heck of a, that's an awful big range to deciding what we want to do.
Thank you. Mr. DeKevitz.
Yeah, DeKevitz, 130 Hockenham Road. Gentlemen, you're that dead set against open grow like corn and anything else?
For the time being, open grow is not permitted. It can only be grown in an enclosed building, because like I just said, we don't know what the real story is on odors. And in, in an enclosed building, the odors and light emissions can be very tightly controlled.
And who, and who said this isn't an agricultural endeavor? I'm curious, who? What genius came up with that? You know, it's a plant.
So, it is a plant, but we're gonna count how many...
A plant you put in the ground.
We're gonna count how many angels could dance on the head of a pin here. The zoning act, chapter 48, has an exemption for agriculture. Says agriculture cannot be unreasonably regulated.
Has rights to farm by law.
Well, it's more than the right to farm by law. It's the state zoning law that gives agriculture on a five acre or larger parcel, a virtual exemption on zoning. The chapter 48, I think it's chapter, section three, is subjects which may be regulated. And so, there's the agricultural exemption. When the referendum to allow adult growth or adult use passed, the, I think the one change that the state legislature made was to add in the enabling legislation that adult use marijuana essentially is not, is, is not sub, is not entitled to the exemption, the agricultural exemption from the zoning act. So, it is agricultural. If we had no bylaw, you could open grow in the agricultural residential district. But because it is not exempt from zoning under the agricultural exemption of the zoning act, we can impose, we, we can impose restrictions. They don't have, you don't get into a question of whether it's unreasonable or anything. We can impose restrictions on the growth of this crop because the state legislature says it is not exempt from zoning.
The way I read this bylaw, may I continue, sir?
Yes, sir.
The way I read this bylaw, it looks like it's set up for corporate people to come in and raise, not for a guy here in town that's got a tractor and he's got land and he knows how to raise stuff. And I'm gonna tell you, right now, I, I don't use this stuff myself, okay? But I'm all in favor of opportunities for, for some of our agricultural people here in the town of Hadley. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I may reply?
Certainly.
The, we agree. We do, that's why we're allowing it in every zoning district, basically, except I think the residential, which is Meadowbrook and the streets around there. The genesis of this restriction, this limitation on open growth, came directly from people who, whose homes were adjacent to active farmland and who were concerned about the impact of this product on their homes. So, in Hadley, roughly, we'll call 75% of the town is zoned agricultural residential, which means you can have farms and a street with 20 houses right up against each other. The people who were concerned enough to come to our meetings were primarily residents who wanted to be sure that they were not going to have product growing right next to them. And hence, the limitations on size and the setbacks, for starters. As Jim said, we can, we can come back to this next year, depending on experience and depending on experience in other towns. But for right now, this is our opportunity to create some reasonable restrictions.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim DeKevitz, 9 Old Mountain Road. I just had a couple of thoughts here and one thing, the idea that we can revisit this in a year based on our experiences at town. If you look at how the state has been approving licenses, there is likely not gonna be very many points of comparison, especially with outdoor grows in, in the state. So, I think in a year, we're probably going to be right here in the same position. We can debate a lot of different things on this issue, too. One thing we can't debate is that there is going to be money made from this project, from this product. Nothing's gonna stop that. The only thing we can determine is who is going to make that money and where that money is gonna be made. Is it gonna be made in the town of Hadley by farmers who grew up here, who contributed to this town and want to stay? Or are we going to add these sorts of regulations that put that sort of cultivation out of the reach of many of the family farmers of this town? 150 years ago, 90% of the people of this country were involved in agriculture. Today, that number is 10%. Family farms are going under everywhere. And it seems a bit schizophrenic to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of Community Preservation Act money to preserve farms and then at the same meeting, pass laws that will make it difficult for working farms to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin Vega, 36 Golden Court. Just wanna get a little love out there for some skunks. Skunks don't stink. And I also wanna say that, are we gonna vote about how bad manure smells?
Agricultural exempt.
Yes, sir.
Michael Treviso, I am the farm manager and the head grower at Five College Farms.
What's your address, please?
My address is 319 River Drive.
Thank you.
So, I had a couple of comments and questions. One is the way that this article is drafted, it appears that this is pretty similar to some of the articles that I've seen by other municipalities. And what this article does is it forces you to grow cannabis in a confined space where you are required to produce artificial lighting. So, and if you look at our facility, we put out about 181 micromoles per square meter. This is French to some people, but for our 50,000 square foot facility, we put out 394 kilowatts in one hour, 394 kilowatts of light. That's how much power it takes to produce about 181 micromoles per square meter on a one acre facility. When you grow cannabis, you wanna grow cannabis in this kind of environment, you need to not only regulate your lighting, but you also need to regulate your temperatures. That means you have to use air conditioning to cool the room. That means you have to use fans or, or steam or some other fuel, fossil based fuel usually. You could use wood chips as we do to heat the facility. But a cannabis, you want to use about four times as much light as we use, which would mean that you need about 800 to as much as 1,000 micromoles, which is five times more light, because you do not have the sun. You only run that light for 12 hours because that's what actually controls your flowering. While in our farm, we run it for 18 hours because we wanna push production for tomatoes. So, when you look at this bill and, or this article, I'm sorry, what you're essentially saying is that you need to actually grow your cannabis in an enclosed facility. You're concerned with light pollution and I, I'm, that's what kinda got my attention when I saw this, is because we produce more light pollution than cannabis would. Cannabis puts out 12 hours. You don't want more than 12 hours. Even in the middle of the summer, you have to actually use shade curtains to shut the greenhouse down and prohibit any light from coming in so that you can control your flowering and you get the right buds, which will increase your THC or CBD content, depending on what you're looking for. As far as smell, I grew three acres in Oregon. It doesn't smell at all until you get to about the harvesting stage, then it really starts to smell, but nobody ever complained about the smell. What they complained about was the number of curious, curious folks that would come at night, two-legged bandits that would come in and, and steal your crop. That was more of a concern than the smell. But yes, it does, it does smell and, and when you harvest it, you, you stink and you can't really go anywhere without smelling it. That was my experience. I, I didn't like that part of growing cannabis. So, I'm not a cannabis grower. I did that while I was a student at Oregon State University, working an internship at a farm in Philomath, Oregon. However, I, I can testify, it, it does stink somewhat, but nobody really complained about it nearby and it was mostly during the harvest when you really smell it. My other concerns is if we're going to do this and say, or write this article and say, well, noise, light pollution is an issue, it concerns me as a grower as to whether or not the community likes or does not like, or negatively somehow, you know, the light that we put out. I've heard different feedback, but nobody has ever actually come to us and say, we don't like your greenhouse, we don't like your facility, you, you put out too much light. We'd love to hear any comments, if anybody has any complaints, I, we would love to hear it. I'm not a citizen of Hadley. I live in Sunderland, so I work in Hadley.
Okay, excuse me. You, you told me you said your address was River, your town address was River Drive. You have to be a voter to speak unless you get a...
I, I was going, I'm sorry. I was actually asked to do that. Should I be quiet now?
Yes, you should. You should've been quiet a long time ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your information. Mr. Loskevitz?
John Loskevitz, 116 East Street. I'm not speaking for the board right now. We've had tobacco grown before. We've had potatoes grown before. The manure smell in the spring and fall is quite overwhelming at times. I don't think the smell is a real issue. I, I've been adjacent to these fields for all these crops, for all these years, and we've dealt with them because this is a farming community.
Thank you. Mr. Horowitz?
Shal Horowitz, 16 Barstallane. I've got a lot of feelings about this. On the one hand, I see the issues that the farmers are bringing up. I respect that tremendously. I would love to see the small farmer with an acre or two getting involved in this crop and I'm concerned that the regulation will make that difficult. On the other hand, I think leaving the town unprotected for a year while we figure out how to write a better bylaw is a really bad idea, because this, this is a very, I'll make a little pun here, cannibalistic industry. You know, I, I used to live in the neighborhood of North Hampton that now has NIDA and I, I see what's going on in that neighborhood and like, it's gridlock. You can't drive there, you can't walk there, and the issue about security. So, if these regulations are too tough for local farmers, I would suggest we pass this tonight and they can be working on some amendments to make this a law that, that works for them. In the meantime, nobody's growing pot in town, it's not a big deal. But I, I really don't wanna see a situation where we have absolutely no regulation of this. There are issues around security, there are issues around exposure to children, there are issues about light and smell. I live on a, on a dairy farm, okay? I have lived there 20 years and I've smelled a lot of cow manure and now I sometimes smell methane. It's one of the, the things that I was willing to do to move to the country from the big city of North Hampton. I, I think we want to be in a situation where we don't have the equivalent of the chapter 40B railroading about affordable housing. And I'm a supporter of affordable housing, but I'm not a supporter of affordable housing pushing out zoning regulations that are there for our protection just because of the way the law is constructed for cities like Boston and Somerville and Cambridge and not for a town of 5,000 people that's mostly farm.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Ken Carter from Gooseberry Lane in Hadley. I'd like to be really clear that first of all, you know, Hadley is a mixed agricultural and residential area, so it's not like many communities that have parcels set aside for people that live in a certain area and then farming and industrial. We're mixed use. I mean, there's only a very small portion of the town of Hadley actually that's zoned residential, okay? The issue with the bylaw, and I've been part of, you're trying to help set up something that's fair, is that there are problems and a lot of unknowns associated with growing marijuana in an area like Hadley. It's loaded with unknowns. You hear stories about, oh, it stinks. Oh, it doesn't stink. Well, you know, I have been around grow operations and they do stink, okay? There's no doubt about it. But, you know, open grow, it's gonna be incredible. There's people in Munson that have closed, enclosed spaces that are complaining right now. If you actually go and Google complaints about marijuana cultivation, that's gonna be the number one complaint that you see. Like the previous speaker said, all we're asking is that you give us time to figure this out, right? Because if we don't pass a bylaw, it's gonna be the Wild West, okay? And once a facility actually is growing, it's almost impossible to stop it, right? You can't, you can't go to somebody that starts an operation and say, oh, we've changed our mind, we wanna change the zoning and you can't, you can't do that. Once it's, once it's open, it's a free for all. It's gonna, it, it, there's no control. So, all we're asking is for this... So all we're asking is for this particular bylaw to be approved, and then we can figure out all the things. Massachusetts jumped into this without understanding at all what they're doing. And now you're seeing community after community fighting each other, at odds with each other, all for this promise of money, that's probably going to evaporate once other states legalize anyway. So all we're asking for is pass this. It's not binding for the future of, you know, for 10 years or anything like that. We can come back and revisit this, because that's what we want to do. But if we don't do it, good luck. We are all doomed to whatever forces that are out there.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jerry Aldrich, 1 Morning Star Drive. I'd like to thank Ken and Mr. Horowitz. I share many of their sentiments on this, and I think the important one being, and I don't know whether it was mentioned earlier, the reason that this bylaw becomes important at this time, and there really isn't any more time to work on it, or tweak it, or do anything else with it, the planning board has diligently spent, I don't know, eight, nine, maybe 10 months on it. They know better than I do about that. But the issue that we're faced with is, we have a moratorium, which we have extended in this town, into the start of the summer. And if no zoning is in place by the start of the summer, then there will be no zoning, no regulation on this industry at all. And, you know, we can talk about it being a farming community and all of that, and I think anyone who attended the planning board meetings realized that they are wholeheartedly in support of farming in this town, and the citizens that attended these meetings are as well. And that's why Tim Nyheart isn't hearing complaints, because there's manure smells or tobacco smells or any of those. We all embrace that, that's part of what this all is. But what we're looking to do is not end up in a situation like Charlton, Mass. has ended up in, or is trying to skirt, where people came into town. I mean, we've preserved 4,000 acres here for agriculture. Without zoning, much, any agricultural land, in theory, can now become cannabis cultivation land, which means we could have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres. And since Hadley did the right thing years ago, and protected farmers' interest in the land in Hadley, when we were doing zoning, and Dr. Zgradnik is the expert on this, because he may have been on the board then, the zoning board then, but the thing with our zoning here in Hadley is, we carved out a very, very tiny piece for residential. It encompasses, I don't know, the equivalent of maybe four or five city blocks, probably. The rest, except for the Route 9 corridor and some on 47, is agricultural residential, which means we decided we were going to allow both uses. So that preserved, rather than having just agricultural here and residential in certain places, that preserved a farmer's right to farm, right up to residences. And that was a good thing, because this is an agricultural community. But when these, all these house lots were sold off, they were sold off to individuals who said, "Yes, fine, we'll have tobacco and potatoes and sprays and all of this all the time." We accept that, because we're moving into a farming community. Nobody anticipated that we would be moving into an area where perhaps there will be hundreds upon hundreds of acres of open grow, openly cultivated marijuana by large corporations. The small farmers aren't who's growing it in Charlton. There's, large corporations have come in, they've banded together to buy up, 350 acres was the last tally I had, a new Havana. And they've, they're splitting their licenses among another, a number of different entities in order to have this massive agribusiness. And there are, there is no local farmer participation. This is a massive, a massive thing that's gone on. If we pass this bylaw tonight, this, I can tell you for sure that this planning board would be more than glad to revisit it if everything is all roses here a year from now. And I'm sure that they'll come back before this body and try to change things.
Could you wrap it up, please, sir?
Gladly. But I'm asking you tonight to vote for this bylaw, so that we have the time and that we don't end up turning this into the Wild West of marijuana cultivation, and have that be the principal crop that gets grown in Hadley. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jeff Moss, 11 High Meadow Road. I would like a clarification, a legal clarification. Marijuana, from a federal standpoint, is still classified as a Schedule I drug. And right now, the only thing that's uncertain right now is the level, the politics of enforcement. But from a federal standpoint, it is illegal. I'd like clarification on, given that fact, what impact that might have on this article and on the, the regulation in general in terms of what's going on in Hadley.
The only thing regarding the federal law is that cannabis cannot be grown on APR land, because it's got federal money on it. And that's only the present clause. If the federal government changes their mind, obviously that'll be different. But that is the only impact that that has on this bylaw, is that cannabis cannot be grown in any shape or form on APR land, either open grow or in a building.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
David Adams, 90 Southern Shack Road. I like to speak in strong support of the approval of this zoning bylaw article. And I'd like to make one very clear point about this, that the bylaw entered discussion here tonight has no impact on medical or personal marijuana used by adults. Personal marijuana is guaranteed under state law. Everybody's heard about the 12 plants per household. Not under discussion tonight, guaranteed by state law. Medical marijuana is treated under a separate bylaw in the town of Hadley. Anybody with medical marijuana, no impact on what's being discussed here tonight. Tonight's action does not change either of these, it only affects retail recreational marijuana establishments. I want to emphasize what several people have said about opening up the town of Hadley to the growth in sale of marijuana, because if this bylaw does not pass and it fails, that could happen anywhere in this town. I think it's time to pass this bylaw and work on changes at some time in the future. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. We have a motion to call the question. Okay. Hang on just a minute. Yes. So, Mr. Adams, you incorrectly called the question. You are not allowed to have, make a statement and then call the question, so I'm not going to allow.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Holwitt, 134 West Street. I just wanted to speak in favor, to start with restrictions and gain more information. I would like to know more about the dangers of people coming onto private property at night to go into fields where it's being grown. I'd like to know about the dangers of kids going into fields. Hopkins Academy abuts farmland. So I think it's wise to start with restrictions and gain more understanding of what the risks are, and then as we understand what those are, then restrictions can be lifted in the future.
Thank you. You've spoken already. Hang on just a minute, please. Yes, sir.
Stephen Herbert, 81 Shack Road. I'd like to speak about some things that have been said. You cannot grow acres and acres of cannabis or marijuana in Massachusetts. It's limited to 100,000 square feet, which is just 2.2 acres, and that is the maximum any group, person, entity can grow. So these corporations that think that they can buy up vast tracts of land and then parcel it out will not get through the Cannabis Control Commission, in my view. There is also considerable amount of money which the town could get from this cannabis. A tier one would only gain the town about $22,000. But a tier six would gain the town $270,000. And if you use blackout greenhouses, which block the light so there's no light pollution, then you could do two or three crops a year in those greenhouses, and you could get up to about $800,000 of tax revenue the town would be able to collect. So I would like to offer an amendment, that the tier levels for two to six be allowed in the AR zone. I'd like to amend that in this article, so that we don't jeopardize the farmers who want to do some of this work.
Okay, so if you want to make an amendment, I need it in writing.
I will give you it in writing.
Do you have it now?
Yes, I can tear this off here. I could make one other point, that the present bylaws that you have with the 300-foot setback would protect homes from this in their face. It would not be in their face. And farmers and the planning board could say, "Okay, let's try and get it back behind something, so it's not right in the visible public." It has to be fenced, so that children cannot get into it, and other people get into it. That's a requirement of the Cannabis Control Commission, which is very well regulated as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to amend the table of uses to allow tiers two to six in the AR district. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so discussion relative to the amendment. Mr. Maximowski?
This would allow a large greenhouse in the ag residential districts that we were trying to avoid, because according to, what is level six? What's the maximum square footage?
The person with the amendment should know that.
I don't know that off, do not, do not know that off the top of my head. What is the, what is the level six, tier six square footage? He doesn't know it either.
106 square feet, I think. 106 square.
No, no, that's not, that's not greenhouse. That is a marijuana facility. The greenhouse could be much larger. A thing for people to understand, that when you have a square footage, it is not the square footage of the greenhouse, it is the square footage of the actual marijuana. So that 100,000 square foot of marijuana could conceivably be in a greenhouse significantly larger, because they go by square footage of marijuana, not square footage of the grow facility, or the square footage of the field. So that 100,000 square foot marijuana floral is bigger than that, and I don't know how much bigger than that, because a lot of it depends on how they grow it, okay?
Tier six is 40,000 to 50,000.
Tier six is 50,000 square feet of marijuana, and the facility could be more than likely much larger than that. That is a little over an acre of greenhouse. And what we're trying to avoid from the beginning is getting too big at the initial stages, because we don't know what we don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Ken Parker, 118 Mount Warner Road. Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Okay. Right, right. Mr. Parker, are you moving the amendment?
Yes, we have to amend.
That's what we're talking about.
We have to do the amendment anyway.
Yeah, we're moving, okay. I have a motion to move the amendment.
And the regular motion?
One at a time. Let's do one at a time, okay? Do I have a second to move the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Of moving the question.
Of moving the question, the amendment. Moving the amendment.
No, we're voting on the question. We are voting to end debate.
On everything?
No, we're voting to end debate on the amendment.
Right.
So that's, what we're voting for is to cut off debate, that we have a second vote on the amendment.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, okay. Okay, thank you. So, so we are voting on ending discussion on the amendment. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now...
Vote on the amendment.
Okay. Now, we're going to vote on the amendment. Okay? So, now do we have discussion on this?
No.
Okay, so, all those in favor, move to amend the table of uses to allow tiers two to six in the agricultural residential district. So that's the amendment. Oh, because right now, it's not, it's, okay. So, we are now voting on the amendment, correct? Okay. Right, so, a yes vote means it gets amended, a no vote means it doesn't get amended. All those in favor of the amendment? Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment fails. Now we're back to the main question.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Ken Parker, 118 Mount Warner Road. I move the question.
Okay, a motion to move the question.
Rick Fair, 179 Huckamont Road. I would like to move the question.
Okay. So, we have, okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question. So now we are going to vote on the, vote to, okay. Okay, we're going to vote to stop debate on the question. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we're going to vote on the question, which requires two-thirds. Okay? Do we need to read it again, or are we all good? Okay. All those in favor of Article 27 signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Keep your cards up, please, I have to count. Okay, thank you. Motion passes 190 to 18. Okay, last article. Article 28. Okay. Article 28 is a citizens' article, and the motion will be by the petitioners. Tell me who you are, please. I don't have any motion. It's not. It says motion by petitioners, in mine anyhow. Said the microphone's off. It's not working.
John, the microphone's not working?
Tess?
It's okay.
Does anybody have a motion up here? You don't? Well, we, we don't have it, we don't have anything. Nobody up here has one.
No, I haven't. It was just a procedural misunderstanding. I thought you would read it and I would speak to it. I will read the petition, and then I will speak to it. Michelle Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. Article 28. Town meeting, Hadley Citizens Article, resolution in support of changing the state motto and seal of Massachusetts. As the 400th anniversary of the landing of the pilgrims at Patoxet or Plymouth approaches in 2020, citizens of the town of Hadley are called to support a statewide effort to change the current seal and motto of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The several versions of the Massachusetts motto and seal up to this date have been made without consulting the native communities of Massachusetts. Native nations in Massachusetts have long voiced concerns that the current motto and seal image are historically inaccurate, perpetuate harmful stereotypes, and disregard the perspective in native communities. In addition, many Massachusetts citizens believe that the existing motto and seal no longer represent our current understanding of our state's history or our values of the Commonwealth. And if I can, I'd like to skip to the speech I was going to do, which is a continuation of this. Or just read it.
You need, yeah, you need to make a motion that the town move to vote in favor of your resolution.
Oh, okay. Then I'll continue this. Massachusetts House Bill HD 2968 and the Massachusetts Senate Bill SD 1495 would set up a commission to investigate changes to the state motto and seal. The commission would include state legislators and at least five representatives of native nations within the borders of Massachusetts. Recommendations of that commission would have to be approved by the legislature in order to change the current state flag and seal. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Hadley, Massachusetts, adopt this resolution in support of HD 2968 and SD 1495. In addition, be it resolved that the town of Hadley thank State Senator Joe Commerford for co-sponsorship of the Senate resolution. Also, be it resolved that the town of Hadley request that State Representative Dan Carey support the House resolution and vote for its passage in the general court.
Okay, so now you need to make a motion to accept?
Yeah, make a motion to accept this resolution.
Okay.
And I would like to speak to it.
Okay, hold on one second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Go ahead, if you'd like.
Okay. I wanted to stress what's already been in the petition, that this resolution does not automatically change the flag, seal, or motto. In fact, it creates a commission that includes the Executive Director of the Commission on Indian Affairs, five members appointed by that commission, or of lineal descent from tribes in Massachusetts. The Executive Director of the Massachusetts Historical Commission, or designee, the Executive Director of the Council on Arts and Humanities, or designee, the Chair of the Massachusetts Arts Commission, or designee, the Chair of the Mass Cultural Council, the House and Senate Chairs of the Joint Committee on State Administration Regulatory Authority, and two persons who shall be appointed by the Governor. The committee will submit a detailed report with its proposals and recommendations to the legislature and to the Governor, who will vote on whether to approve any proposed changes. Report will also be made available to the public via the Internet. My point in explaining this process is to note that any changes in our state flag, motto, and seal will be the result of careful deliberation by many parties. Of prime importance is that this commission will mark the first time that people of native heritage are included in the discussion of our state flag, motto, and seal. I've heard from many people that changing the flag will erase or sanitize history. I contend that the process we are engaged in will add to and round out the historical record by taking into account the narrative and perspectives of native peoples. Furthermore, the discussions and decisions that ensue will all become part of our shared history. What we stand to lose is blind belief in certain founding myths. What we stand to gain is a real understanding of our past. I am one of many people working statewide to support the state and House resolutions on this matter. There have been similar resolutions filed annually since 1984, all of which have sat in committee and have never gotten onto the floor for a vote. As the 400-year anniversary of the landing of the pilgrims at Patoxet or Plymouth approaches next year, it behooves Massachusetts to acknowledge its full history. Elizabeth James Perry and Aquino Wampinalk artists has said, "It is 2019, and the imagery should reflect our dignity, humanity, rights, and equality." Yvonne Abrams, in a Globe column, notes that "this state was born and has thrived in part because of Native Americans' massive losses. Our flag ought to reflect the huge debt we owe them and a larger sense of who we are and want to be." I thank you for your attention and for staying so late at town meeting.
Thank you.
Diana West, 164 South Maple Street. I would like to speak in support of this initiative as a historian and a museum professional. It is a big push currently in the museum world, at least in New England and hopefully in the United States, to really include native voices as we move forward with deciding how to keep our collections and how to include them, how to repatriate those collections. As we have seen internationally, that's really not happening in regards to the British Museum. And as has been said, native voices have not been included on this issue, and they are a part of this state. If the seal and this flag aren't representing everybody, then they really represent nobody. And as we can see in some southern states, the past has already been changed, and the flag and the seal have not remained the same throughout our entire history, so it really wouldn't be this really radical idea that we would want to move forward and adopt something that was more modern and contemporary to our society. And I'd also just like to reiterate the point that this is not binding, that we're just starting the process. We just want to get the commission off the ground, and we want to hear from a more diverse group of people.
Thank you. Andy?
Andy Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. First, I want to thank Michelle for picking up this issue. She's really picked up the ball and moved it into the red zone, so I thank you for that. That's a football reference, sweetheart. The more you look at the Massachusetts flag, I'm afraid the worse it looks. You can see the person on the flag over there. I don't know if somebody wants to hold it out. Besides the fact that the guy looks like he has an iron deficiency, it's really not a person. It's really a composite of three or four different people. The body of the person on the flag was exhumed without the family's permission to ensure historical accuracy. I wouldn't be too happy if my grandfather's body was dug up and used as a model for an art project. However, they were afraid that he wouldn't look Native American enough, and so they used the head of a person from Montana, because he looked more like an Indian. I think the Massachusetts flag should have a head of a person who's from Massachusetts, and not from Montana. Their flag doesn't have a Massachusetts head on it. Ours shouldn't have a Montana head. The belt that he's wearing is based on Medecomet's Red Final Belt. Medecomet led a rebellion against the English in 1675. After he was killed, the people of Plymouth put his head on a pike for 22 years outside of the town gates. I don't think they did that to honor him or the Native Americans, yet his clothing is depicted on the flag. We really need a flag that represents our modern values based on current historical scholarship. The last thing I would say is, the reason why the Native American is shown holding an arrow is because his people got the shaft.
Thank you. Hang on. Michelle, just a minute.
Sure. I just wanted to take an excerpt out of the newspaper that was in a couple of weeks ago. Just because there is a Native American on the flag doesn't mean it's derogatory. Massachusetts is an Indian word from the Algonquin Nation, meaning "large hill place" or "at the great hill." The flag has a peaceful Algonquin Indian depicted by his arrow pointing downward. The motto says, "By the sword we seek peace, but peace only under liberty," but also means "by his sword he seeks the calm repose of liberty." The motto and the sword are in reference to the American Revolution fought with England and nothing to do with the Native American on the flag. Everyone has their own interpretations, but could it possibly be paying tribute to the Algonquin Indians for giving us our state's name?
Michelle?
Shell Horowitz, 16 Barstolane. When I, back up. Last month, I was really, really proud of Hadley, because Hadley voted to repudiate racism. When I looked at, it's not so much the flag, but the state's seal, and I see this conquering person of European ancestry lording it over this submissive Indian, I found that obscene. I think this commission is long overdue. Maybe if there's enough groundswell of support, it can finally get moved out of committee and be discussed in the Massachusetts General Court. And I thank Ms. Morris Friedman for bringing this forward, and I plan to vote yes.
Thank you. Michelle? Make it quick, please.
I wanted to address the point about, you know, possibly no ill intent meant. Whether or not there was ill intent, everything I've read, and I've read a lot, native people in this state have said they find the image problematic and offensive and not historically accurate. There's a lot more that they say, too. For example, the arms that's depicted was depicted specifically to be Miles Standish, who was a hero in my school book, learning as a child, but is somebody who's committed multiple murders and documented by Collins against the Native Americans. The other point I want to make, and this is very important.
Quickly, please.
Okay. There is a history in this country of people, of images, that various groups have found offensive and derogatory to them. The groups that produce those images have often not considered those images offensive. I think you have to listen to the people who are being depicted, and their opinions count. Thank you.
I'm going to call the question.
Okay, have a motion to call the question? And a second? All those in favor of calling the question? All those opposed? Motion passes to call the question. Okay, now we're going to vote on the question, right? Yeah, vote on the question as read by petitioner. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, I gotta, I need somebody to help me count. Where did all my counters go? They left. Good. Andy Klopaki, please count your side over there. Okay, we're going to do this again. All those in favor, put your cards up, and hold them up, please. That's, you guys can put your cards down over here. Okay, middle can put down? 13? Okay, all those opposed? 16? What's that? I got them. Okay, I have 63 in favor, 47 against. So, motion passes. Good. Yeah, anybody, before you, somebody wants to make a motion to dissolve, but before we do that, I would like to thank you all for staying. I would like to thank you all for helping me get through this evening. I appreciate it very much. Motion to dissolve? Second? All those in favor? Thank you again, have a good night.